Good evening, everybody. Somebody might have an open speaker on. Thank you. This is the Aspen City Council Work Session for August 19, 2024. And tonight on our agenda, we have Open Space and Trails Board Recommendations regarding Theater Aspen, Non-Discrimination Ordinance, and discussion about the Armory Hall Progress Update, and an entrance to Aspen Ballot Question Discussion. We're going to go ahead and get started with our OST.
Good evening. My name's Matt Kuhn. I'm the Parks and Open Space Director. I'm joined here with Dan Pearl. He's the Board Chair of the City of Aspen Parks and Open Space Board. And we're here tonight to provide some updates to you regarding some recent conversations that have happened at the Open Space and Trails Board Desk. So with that, I'll share my screen. So the goal of tonight's work session is to, again, provide that recommendation of what our board discussed and ultimately is recommending regarding a permanent theater facility development at Rio Grande Park and John Denver Sanctuary. So I'm going to take about five minutes here to describe a little bit of background information and then hand it over to Dan to provide ultimately some more discussion and details as it relates to the board's recommendation. Our Open Space and Trails Board, this is a bit of a unique position that they've been in, and I think it's helpful for us to clarify and provide the specificity around what our board's role is and has been in the process to date. And over the last several years, our board has been reviewing an application by Theater Aspen on these two primary questions, which number one is, is this permanent theater building proposal an appropriate use of the space, of the park space specifically at Rio Grande Park? And ultimately provides some high-level feedback and discussion as it pertains to the proposal. There's many aspects of this proposal, everything from land use components to lease components to design aesthetics. But where we've landed with the Open Space and Trails Board is they're the first body to review this and provide the recommendation, try to get it to a good starting point.
So I'm just going to intersect there then about what's council's role. Just to clarify, this is to provide you an update on what happened at the Open Streets and Trails Board with their recommendation and considerations. I've requested this be a topic for executive session at your next regular meeting for you to provide any negotiation direction to me and your responsibilities as landlords that would intercede with the execution of any type of document to allow the Theater Aspen to be a land use applicant. So I would be signing on behalf as the property owner for the city, and I'm not going to do that without first checking in with all of you. Thanks.
So this all began in a public discussion in late summer of 2022. There was a three-party work session that was with the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Open Space and Trails Board, and the City Council at that time, where Theater Aspen proposed a structure that was predominantly below grade. It used a lot of landforms to cover it, and we did a site visit in August of 2022. Following that, the Open Space and Trails Board dove into the design and the aesthetics and the use of the park space into greater detail in the fall of 2022 and provided feedback to Theater Aspen that the massing, the scale of the impacts to the adjacent John Denver Sanctuary were perhaps too large. Theater Aspen and their design team went back and, in the spring of 2023, worked with Park's staff to kind of re-envision what this space might look like based on this feedback from the Open Space and Trails Board. Our Open Space and Trails Board then reviewed that in August of 2023, hard to believe that was a year ago, provided more feedback. And about that time, City of Aspen staff and the attorney's office started working with representatives from Theater Aspen on those terms that Sarah just mentioned, which were the things revolving around the lease, the letter of intent, and the actual authorization to proceed with a land use application. You'll recall, just not too many months ago, we met with City Council and the Open Space and Trails Board here to discuss the revised drawings from Theater Aspen. And finally, our board met in July to kind of consolidate the recommendation and discuss in detail the proposal that we're going to dive into here shortly. Just as a very high overview, tonight's meeting is not about the design or discussion around the design, but I wanted to just bring this up so that it's in your mind, relatively similar orientation and use of the space as it exists now, albeit in a permanent structure and permanent theater. This is an aerial view if you were a drone flying right over the center of the song garden looking towards the theater to orient you. You can barely see the Rio Grande bathrooms behind the trees here, so in the general vicinity of the theater space presently. As Sarah briefly touched on, council's role is probably going to have many different check-ins and many different points from here on out should we proceed with a land use application. We're here today with the board's recommendation. We're tentatively scheduling an August 27 executive session to discuss specific terms around the lease. Subsequent to that, there might be a signed letter of intent that comes to City Council in a resolution, and should that happen, that would initiate and authorize Theater Aspen to prepare a land use application. As you all are well aware, once you're in the land use application, P&amp;Z, City Council, there is likely going to be several check-ins subsequent to that. This does anticipate several conditions where there may be an approval with condition of voter approval, or there may be a land use application that does not require voter approval. That's to be determined at this point. So with that said, I'd like to hand it over to Dan Pearl and have him discuss in greater detail what our board reviewed.
Thanks, Matt. So I'll just start by kind of sharing with you our recommendation, and then we'll dive into kind of the pieces of it. And we recommend that the applicant proceed with a land use application for this project with the following considerations. So minimally invasive construction process that focuses on environmental integration of the completed project, a further reduction of the scope and scale, flexibility of space and access for other organizations, and access for the community to the surrounding park space and the programming on-site. And so we had several lengthy conversations about this project, and we were very torn as a board. It was a very difficult kind of conversation for us. But ultimately, we came to this recommendation, and we recognized a couple of things. One, we are, as a board, supportive of the work that's happening right now in that space, and we have a great partnership with Theater Aspen. So that use of that space as it currently stands is highly supported by our board. Additionally, we recognize that there are some opportunities to kind of improve what's going on down there. That being said, we also had some very substantial concerns about the project as it currently sits. And we can kind of boil those down to two. And the first one, being the city, the Parks Department, ever inheriting a theater of this scope and scale, whether midway through the construction process, which would obviously be a huge burden, or even after the construction process, a highly specific theater, it's obviously not something that our Parks Department should or would or want to ever manage. And then the second significant concern was taking this public space and making it exclusive. So to kind of address those concerns, we put forth these four kind of recommendations. And the minimally invasive construction idea really touches on that idea of preventing this building to ever, if it were ever, to kind of fall into disrepair or just not be completed to be managed by the city. And we also, you know, as it currently stands, there's significant excavation, and a project of this scale just kind of raised those concerns for us. It also, you know, as you know, we all operate in the business of forever, and a project of this scale, while for now, we are all supportive of this current use, we want this space to remain flexible to whatever the community decides is best for that space. A minimally invasive structure here allows us to kind of restore that area or perhaps change its use should that desire ever come up in the community. The second point was the reduction of scope and scale, and that kind of touches on the same idea. How do we make sure that this space can meet the needs of the applicant but also can be flexible to whatever other uses the community decides? That's that third point, flexibility of space and access for other organizations. Theater Aspen has been a fabulous partner thus far, but we want to make sure that as this is a public space, it provides access to as many organizations as possible. The board kind of had this vision of a performing arts space, and I think as a board, we could really get behind that idea. A highly specific and very technical space kind of really limits the benefit to the public. And so kind of making sure that we have that flexibility built into whatever project goes in that space is important. And then the last point is access for the community. As a board, we really wanted to make sure that a development here was not going to price out anybody who wanted to use that space. And we all know that the design, as it's currently stated, is world-class. With that, we wanted to make sure that we didn't see world-class ticket prices. So we hope that any project goes in this space takes into consideration making sure that it's accessible to all of our citizens. So, you know, this, the, we're kind of, our board is kind of at the end of its impact, input on this project. We're certainly happy to continue to have any conversations and answer any questions that you all have about this project, but we just hope that moving forward, if you do consider to move this on to a land use application, just keep in mind these concerns that we have about the project. And yeah, thanks for your consideration of this.
Thanks so much. Can I draw you out a little bit more on these, you know, conditions have a level of intensity, I would say. So minimally invasive construction, excavating in that location 20 feet to do a basement space and basement usage and stuff is invasive. So when you put forth a recommendation, what's the context here? Is the board saying that that's too invasive? Or are you saying that we can see that working if you do it correctly? Or, you know, what's the level of intensity here around minimally invasive construction in what I see as a park and a wetland created or natural, but a wetland?
Yeah, I mean, I think the concern is just around making, ensuring that the space is always, is flexible enough to be whatever we want it to be. If we dig 20 feet down and surround it with concrete and a concrete tub, it's going to be a theater for a very, very, very long time. If, so I think it's really about how do we make sure the space remains flexible? So can it be restored if it ever, if the need ever arises? The current, I would say that the current, the current design probably does not meet that bar of minimally invasive, and I think the board would like to see something that could be, yeah, potentially restored, changed if necessary, given that this is a public space and, you know, the desire might arise for that. Does that help fully?
Yeah, yeah, a bit. Again, on second bullet point, further reduction of scope and scale. Was there, was there a, are you talking about mass and volume? And was there any, did the board discuss it around any volume metrics, like reduce, you know, this is maybe this much, too much? This is, our feeling is this?
No, we didn't. We really tried to stay out of kind of the discussion on the design. But, you know, I think one and two are kind of pretty well-related, and I think touching on the same idea of, let's make sure this project, let's make sure this space just always remains accessible, flexible, can be restored if necessary, the use can be changed if necessary. It feels like, you know, the design as it's currently slated really cements that use, that space to a very specific use, one that, like I said, at this point, we feel like is an appropriate use, but might not always be.
Any other questions for Dan? Bill?
Firstly, Matt, thank you to you and the team. Dan, thank you for being here and for your efforts on this. We're lucky to have you on this board, and you're great at synthesizing your feedback. So we really appreciate that. I certainly do. I was going to do this essentially the same thing as Tori, but you came up with the second point, further reduction of scope and scale. I want to pry a little bit more there. So, you know, what was the basis for that comment? Does it just look too big on paper? Is the, I haven't seen a drawing that like compares the footprint of the existing versus the proposed, so was it something like that that you saw that triggered that? I just want to be mindful of this if and as we move forward, what the basis of that comment was.
Sure. I think really the basis of that is not necessarily the footprint, but as Tori alluded to, the excavation. So the impact, the project slated, was slated to maintain a very similar height, to encompass a similar kind of project envelope, given that there's currently trailers surrounding the project, so that the new building would kind of encompass, have a similar impact. But the excavation was, I think, really the most concerning in terms of the scale. So how far down we're going? And given that it's a wetland, given that, we don't, yeah, there were just concerns about that process. There were some estimates about where, you know, where the water line is, but we all know that that might be the case on this side of the project, property, but then when we move to this side of the property, things are different. So I think that excavation piece was really kind of triggering the reduction in scope and scale. You know, the applicant is obviously looking for that depth so that they can achieve certain elements of the theater, but our board was concerned about what would come with that, the potential challenges around that complexity of construction and excavation.
Thank you so much. That's it for me.
Sam?
Not sure, thank you for all this. Not sure this is a question for you, but have we gotten a Theater Aspen reaction to this? Because a lot of this, I got to imagine, makes them probably question whether they want to pursue the project.
They, in the July meeting, were present. They had representatives present, so they're aware of this recommendation. I do want to call out a couple things. From their initial presentation that occurred in 2022 to what our board has reviewed, there has been a reduction in scope and scale. And so from a footprint question, as Bill brought up, there has been a reduction from the first proposal to the second proposal. It's relatively in the same area with some growing of the dimensions of the lease area. I would say that Theater Aspen, I'm not going to speak for them tonight, they find, they feel that they have the right balance of how many seats they need to be profitable while not being too large. In other public meetings, Jed Bernstein from Theater Aspen has said that they're at the sweet spot for having enough seats but not too many that they're not filling them. I think our board said, let's make sure that we're absolutely at the smallest possible size to make your proposal work, or Theater Aspen's proposal work, if I can paraphrase. So I think that's been their initial response. On these other aspects, I can't speak for Theater Aspen. I don't think that any of these points of feedback are deal breakers, as you might suggest. I think they're points for future consideration as you're going through various steps in the process.
Thank you. I just want to say, Dan, yeah, these are great values. So if Theater Aspen can follow these values and still have a great project, then I think we're in the right direction for it.
John?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thanks for, after reading your minutes from the Open Space and Trails, everybody seemed to have some probing questions, and all my questions have been answered about the scope and scale, especially the excavation issues, as well as what happens to the facility if the use changes. Those are important questions that I think should be asked and hopefully get some answers to.
Ward, do you have any questions or requests for any more information?
Well, one of my concerns is access to the community. Theater Aspen currently has the right to put on a number of events in the, in that space and the John Denver Sanctuary area. And are there any changes anticipated in those rights with the new building? That's one question.
Ward, I think currently Theater Aspen, in their lease, has allowed eight private rentals per year. That is something that we would want to discuss within the letter of intent and possible lease negotiations, should we get there.
Okay. You know, I think we all are concerned with what would happen to this space if Theater Aspen were to fold or go away. You know, it's been mentioned that this is going to be with us for a long, long time. I'll just put this as a, as a seed for thought, that 10th Mountain Trail Association has turned out to be tremendously successful, but when the first two huts were constructed, the magnum the Magna Mira and the Margy Huts, they had to have, Tenth Mountain had to have a, an agreement with the Forest Service that if they weren't successful, that they would disassemble the structures and return that space to Forest Service land. And just wondering if there's some kind of a way that we can have some kind of flexibility or some kind of mechanism in the event that Theater Aspen folds some, sometime in the future. And my final, final question is that this is, you know, there's a discussion and in the board, or in the Open Space and Trails minutes, concerns about the cost of the, of the tickets and that the local passes get bought up instantly. I'm wondering if, since this is arts and culture, if Wheeler funds might be available to subsidize pricing to reduce ticket prices.
So the, pardon me, the first question regarding disassembly or some kind of endowment or bonding that we use for, should the site get removed, is something that our board discussed on several different occasions. Ultimately, I think we advised our board that those kind of discussions also are things that probably live within the letter of intent or our terms of a lease. And because the Open Space and Trails Board was not reviewing that letter of intent and advising on the lease, I think those are things that we would probably also discuss in executive session or in subsequent meetings on the lease. The last point was.
Wheeler Fund.
Wheeler Funds. Again, we haven't been looking at the long-term funding of this from a city of Aspen perspective. We're absolutely looking that the applicant is the primary funder and guarantee or of the property and the maintenance and operation of the property.
Okay, and then just community access into spaces would be available for other organizations for a fee?
Sure, yeah. The, the thought there is that while Theater Aspen is a, is a great partner, we want this space to be as flexible and useful as possible. And so we really, the idea of, of let's say, a performing arts center really kind of appealed to the board, rather than the city carving out some space for Theater Aspen. So how can we kind of bring some other folks into the fold to really just make sure that whether it's ballet or opera or dance or theater, you know, we cast as wide a net as possible with this project to give as many people access to that space, which is really the, the crown jewel of our, of our parks network.
Yeah, thank you. I, I support sending this forward.
My questions are around, is this park's land that it's on?
Yes.
It is, it would a vote be required by the public if we were to do a, set up lease terms or something?
I think there are several, and I maybe defer to Kate, but there are several potential paths that we take, some of which take us to a vote.
I would agree with that. I think it, it depends on the terms that we're discussing here. I would note we have an executive session, I believe, scheduled or plan to schedule an executive session next week, and we can certainly be prepared to discuss that question with you during that executive session.
Great, thank you. I would be interested in the cost, if there was be additional costs for grounds, maintenance, trails and upkeep for our parks department associated with the project. And I would also be interested in what the relationship would be with the park. Last year, I think we had a scheduling conflict between Theater Aspen and some activities that were scheduled for the park. And I think we were able to work it out and honor the request of Theater Aspen at that time, but a permanent home, what would be conditions that Theater Aspen would be seeking for limited use of Rio Grande Park in order to have their performances unimpeded or uninterrupted and stuff? And that kind of scheduling around would be of interest to me. Thank you very much to Open Space and Trails. I, I think what you've put forward here was really good eye openers and things to watch for. I think you really did fulfill your responsibility for appropriate recommendations. So thank you very much. Well done.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other comments, questions? Phil?
Yeah, I too am supportive of, of advancing this. I know that's not the specific question you're asking, but I wanted to express that. And during executive session, I'd like to make sure that we talk about lease structure or expense recapture kind of things, at least initially in that, in that setting. Thanks.
We're ready for all those next week, so we'll see you then.
Thanks. Thank you so much.
Thanks, guys.
Next item on our agenda is an update on the City of Aspen's non-discrimination ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, this will be co-presented by Kate Johnson and Alyssa Farrell. We're just finishing up getting her presentation to load.
Thanks, Sarah. Filling in our gap there. All right. Good afternoon, council. So I'm going to kick us off briefly. We have a check-in on our non-discrimination ordinance, call it the NDO. This evening, it's, it's, our, our primary goal is to check in to make sure we're on the right course. We have a, a council meeting for first reading on August 27th, and we have two quick questions for you at the end. Does council support the general revisions and direction that we're moving in? I'll provide you with a background and update on the community engagement process that has transpired since mid-June. And then I'll turn it over to Kate Johnson. As a reminder, in 1977, the City of Aspen initiated the state's first anti-gay discrimination law. Ordinance number 60, attachment A in your packet, which prohibited discrimination based on race, color, creed, religion and other factors as it relates to employment, housing, public services and accommodation services. It was groundbreaking for its time, and it's time to modernize it. It's time for an update. We worked with APSCA and Aspen Police Department as key internal stakeholders for refinement specific to their areas of expertise. We also ran the ordinance with the proposed revisions through two subject matter experts so we could ensure we have best practices and contemporary understandings of discrimination incorporated into the ordinance. Really, over the last year, the city has worked to modern, modernize this ordinance. And proposed language, which Kate will elaborate on, includes general areas related to strengthening language for inclusivity, expansion of the definitions section, strengthening or enhancing mechanisms for addressing discrimination, and then there's fine tuning throughout. As I stated previously, since mid-June, the city has publicized a draft NDO, non-discrimination ordinance. And we sought community input through various communication channels, as many as we could, including, we did incorporate FAQ as well, print media, social media, the radio, newsletters. Information was passed along through the chamber, through Agra, along with public community-wide announcements for our two town halls. And we also invited more than 2,000 business owners to our town halls. Community partners, residents and the local business community provided a few comments about general interests and how the ordinance would be applied to our Aspen community. There were no concerns or objections, and the small amount of feedback received was overall positive and expressed an appreciation for the updates. Any questions for me? Otherwise, I'll turn it over to Kate.
Question from Bill?
Thank you, Alyssa. A few questions. Can, can we identify, you don't have to do it right now, we can do this next time it comes back, but can we identify which of the discrimination terms go beyond what's already federal or state law?
You're, you're providing the perfect segue into my baton passing to Kate, who will elaborate on the changes that are made to the ordinance.
Should I wait for Kate to talk and then ask my questions?
Potentially, yes.
Great.
Good afternoon, council. Thank you. Good afternoon, council. Kate Johnson with the City Attorney's Office. I, I'm here to just briefly review the changes that exist from the current ordinance, which has been on the books since 1977, and the proposed ordinance you have before you. The first area where we made changes and enhance the, the governance of this ordinance was in the definitions section. So we've highlighted for, for your review, the areas where the definitions which we added. So specifically, we added the terms gender identity, gender expression, genetic characteristics, religious expression, pregnancy, parenthood, custody of a minor child. We added mental disability to the definition of discrimination, source of income, immigration status, and individuals, friends or associates. What this does is it expands the class and the, the persons to be protected from adverse actions or adverse treatment due specifically to these identities. We defined some of these terms. So included in your ordinance will be a, a definition of gender identity, gender expression, household. The terms not highlighted were already present in the ordinance. Religious expression, sex and sexual orientation. This gives a more definition to the use of these terms when we apply this discrimination ordinance to any perceived acts of discrimination. I would note that subsection B is discriminatory employment practices prohibited. We made no changes to this section. So since 1977, it has been prohibited in Aspen discriminate employment practices. Again, what we did change, though, was that definition of discrimination to include more classes of people in these protections. Discrimination, discriminatory housing practices prohibited. Again, that was always part of the ordinance. What we did in this particular update was exclude certain provision, certain circumstances from discriminatory practices. So I'm just gonna summarize these because it's, it's rather long, but I can give you a general idea of what we created exemptions for. Housing operated by religious institutions. Owners and lessors from limiting occupancy of dwelling units, they occupy as their residents. Housing facilities devoted entirely to housing members of a single sex are mentally and physically disabled individuals. Discrimination on the basis of parenthood, pregnancy or custody of children, and housing solely occupied by persons over 55. Housing where the owner leases or subleases for more, no more than 18 months while the owner is away and leaves personal belongings in the residence. Housing encumbered by restrictive covenants precluding residents of minor children that were in place prior to November 17th, 1981, and in some large housing complexes, only up to one-third may be restricted based upon these parentage situations. With respect to the other changes, so that's the substance of what's prohibited in Aspen, what is considered discrimination. We also made some changes to the enforcement section. We specifically spelled out in this new version that the City Attorney's Office has the power to enforce the discrimination ordinance. In the prior ordinance, persons aggrieved by discriminatory practices had the right to pursue civil actions on their own. We gave them a, a cause of action, essentially. They could seek damages and they could also seek other civil remedies such as injunctions and protection orders, for instance. What we did was we added a section that before they can do that, they have to make a, a written request for the city attorney to pursue those civil, that civil action. We have 14 days to evaluate that request and provide a decision as to whether or not we would pursue that on the person's behalf. They can then pursue it if we either choose not to pursue a civil action because we don't think we can meet our burden of proof or for other reasons. Or if we pursue it but later end up dismissing it, they would then, their, their ability to pursue a civil action would be triggered at that point. And finally, with respect to the penalties, under the old ordinance, the penalty for a violation of this section was a fine of $300 and/or imprisonment for 90 days. We align this with most of our other violations throughout our civil, our, our municipal code, which allows the, the municipal court to impose a fine of anywhere between zero and $2,650 and/or imprisonment for up to one year. So it's, it's more consistent with, with many of your other code provisions. And finally, the last section was always part of the 1977 ordinance, but if, if the violator has a business license, a city permit, a franchise agreement, or any other benefit offered by the city, this gives the, we have the ability to revoke that. That was always part of the old ordinance. We did add an appeal provision, which allows them to appeal that decision to city council if we were to take that action. So you would have a say in whether or not we, we exercise that power appropriately and in accordance with the law. Finally, we added an element of proof section. And what this does is it says that, that to prove discriminatory practices, you, it's not necessarily determinative on the characteristics of the victim. What we're looking for is discriminatory intent, treatment and/or impact, disparate impact or treatment. So the essential element of proof shall be of discriminatory intent, disparate treatment or disparate impact, and there has to be a nexus between such impact or treatment or act and the action or refusal or failure to act. So essentially, we have to be able to show intent and we have to be able to show that the act occurred or that the discrimination occurred, but not necessarily focused on the characteristics of the victim of the perceived act. So while it's, it can be admissible, it's not necessary to prove an act of discrimination under this ordinance. Councilmember Guth, you asked a question. I will note that for state law, for instance, I know immigration status is one area in which they have, they have made, taken steps to specifically prohibit discrimination based on immigration status, both in the employment section and the housing section and generally public service section and benefits. That was done in the last few years at the state legislature. I cannot speak to, I would note that we added this unless otherwise required by law. So we did carve out in instances there will be potentially discrimination based upon this because it is required under other areas of the law. The most obvious might be, for instance, in the Picken County Jail. For safety reasons, they have the ability to make decisions that may run afoul of this ordinance. And we've carved out areas so that that, they don't conflict if there's another law that governs a particular decision or benefit or employment practice. With respect to the, the other, I will note, I would I would say that if you were to look at constitutional law, religious expression probably has a lot of protections at the federal level with respect to the First Amendment rights. Not necessarily with discrimination on these, all of these areas that we're talking about here, but I can look more into that. I don't know what federal law governs, but we can provide more information before first reading of this ordinance on that question.
Shall I continue?
Yep.
Thanks. The reason I ask that is I want to understand sort of which of these are already covered, and we're just being kind of redundant, right? Because I think many of them, if not most of them, are.
Probably. I would agree with that.
So I'd just like to understand what we should really be focused on here of where we're going beyond the scope of, of federal and state law. And that's really all we should be considering here. I'm certainly supportive of, of nondiscrimination, of this nondiscrimination ordinance and any nondiscrimination ordinance. I, I wish it was as simple as just saying you can't discriminate, period, but I'm assuming it's not that simple, and that's why we're doing this. That being said, I'm concerned with a couple of the new things here because they can be difficult to perceive, I would imagine, and difficult to, to judge and determine some of these criteria. And I want to, I want to make sure we're all thinking about that and we're all careful with that. I, I don't want anyone to be in a situation where they've made a personal decision, or a business decision, or a familial decision, and aren't discriminating, but are being accused of discriminating based on some things that are difficult to even observe. So I think that's my comment and my concern here. But certainly supportive of nondiscrimination and don't support any kind of discrimination. Thanks.
Thanks, Bill. John?
Yeah, first of all, I just want to comment how proud I am of Aspen for passing the first anti-gay discrimination law back in 1977. It's amazing. I just want to thank you for being so thorough. I'm all for this. Thanks.
Thanks, John. Ward, any comments or questions?
Yeah. I, I think that the state has a nondiscrimination based on the legal status of an immigrant, that you can't, funds can't be withheld if a person isn't a legal resident. And is there a reason that we are not extending those rights to, to people that are non-legal immigrants?
Councilmember Hollenstein, I, I agree with you. There, there are state laws on the books that prohibit discrimination based upon immigration status. We have included immigration status as a class protected under our discrimination ordinance. So we're adding immigration status to this ordinance. Therefore, you can't discriminate with respect to employment practices, housing practices, and/or the, you know, in the area of giving public services or accommodations based upon immigration status. Is that your question, or am I misunderstanding your question?
Got it.
Okay.
Yeah. Then I, on the enforcement, in my, is a characterization that the City Attorney has the right of first determination, is that incorrect, or is that, from an overview, is that adequate or accurate?
So to further clarify your comment, I think you're accurate, but we have two sort of forms of, of remedies people can take. If, for instance, we were to receive a report of this, we can issue a citation into the City of Aspen Municipal Court, where violators would be subject to fines and/or penalties, including imprisonment. We also grant people a personal right to pursue civil action in a court of competent jurisdiction, which would likely be here in Picken County. And pursuant to that right to pursue a, a civil cause of action, that is where we have required that you first come to the City Attorney's Office, and we have 14 days to decide whether or not to pursue that action. If we choose not to pursue the civil action, then that individual has the right to pursue it on their own.
Okay, and I'm not sure I got a clear understanding of Councilman Guth's comment about if these are covered under state and federal, why should we be doing it as a local ordinance?
Can I interject there? That, that wasn't my question at all. Ward, what I asked was, I want to understand what is already covered by state and federal law so that we can focus on what's different. I didn't say, why should we be doing it? That wasn't my question at all.
No, I said that, and I guess that's my question is, if these are protected by state and federal laws already, what is the necessity for a local ordinance to extend the same protections that are already afforded by the state and federal?
So in this instance, I will just note, as written, it gives you a little bit more power in the sense that you have the right then to revoke any benefits the city may have offered a violator, which would not be authorized under state law. I also would note that, that this just gives you a little bit more local control over the ability to, to enforce against violators of, or, or people that engage in discriminatory practices. Under the state laws, and I can't speak to all of them, enforcement of those state laws can be somewhat cumbersome and difficult for people to access, depending on their situation in life. And so this, this gives them a local option to pursue enforcement if they so choose. It wouldn't prohibit them from accessing those other state enforcement mechanisms.
Yeah, and I'm still not clear on, I mean, I, I support this ordinance, and I don't agree with any kind of discrimination. But if a federal, we're a home rule charter. If a federal or state removes some of those protections, can our ordinances be in effect if they're in conflict with federal or state?
It may depend whether or not federal preemption laws would overrule or disallow us to pursue that or not. I mean, that, that's, that would require a legal analysis based upon it, the, any given set of facts and the particular discriminatory act you're seeking to enforce.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Ward. The questions that are in front of us, and I guess you've just gotten some feedback for me supporting the general revisions, yes. And I do not see any revisions that I am requesting at this time. I didn't hear any, any other requested revisions and overall support for what we have in front of us.
Can I just add, add one thing on top of my previous comments? Is on, on number two, are there any revisions? I don't know what revisions to ask for, but I think I expressed my concerns. If they're not clear, I'm happy to talk about them more. But some of these discrimination criteria, again, are very difficult to discern or observe. And, and I don't know how one is. I think there are obvious ways to discriminate that and unintentional ways to discriminate against that. And I know Kate talked about intent being an important part of this, but perhaps there's some language that we should be contemplating in here that are, you know, that, that alludes to the alleged discriminator needs to, should reasonably be aware of these criteria that they might be accused of discriminating. Again, I don't know what revisions I'm asking for here. This is not something I'm an expert in, but that is my concern.
Again, I think Councilmember Ward, and I'm, I'm just providing this as maybe some, some context for why we're pursuing this, or why we're asking to update this. Intent is required, so we have to prove either intent, which, as you said, is very sometimes hard to show or to prove. Actually, actual disparate treatment or actual disparate impact. So what we're looking at here is the end result of a decision regarding housing, a decision regarding employment, or a decision regarding public services. So that's what we're going to be looking at. With respect to the public benefit piece, they have an appeal right to come to council. And with respect to the violations under municipal court, they're going to be heard here in Aspen in a municipal court. I think that we have discretion in these areas, both your municipal judge, city council and staff, to understand that there are circumstances and situations where maybe it happened inadvertently. And we can address those as they come up. I think this gives us flexibility to do that in our range of fines, range of penalties. And again, the City Attorney's Office has some power as to whether or not they choose to pursue civil action. And I think that would be a consideration that we would take into account.
Yeah, I appreciate that, but again, let me, let me use an example here, and this is not to pick on any situation or, or circumstance at all. But if a housing decision is made on someone who has a very obvious physical disability, and assuming the person who's being accused of discriminating has their vision, it's pretty easy to say that they recognize the disability and made a decision based on that. But some of these other terms that you've included here, let's use the one genetic characteristics. What does that even mean? And how, how, how would someone judge that the accused could recognize the genetic characteristics of, of the alleged victim? It's really, it can get pretty nebulous, right? So that's, that's what I'm asking, is let's contemplate that a little bit. Let's make sure that there's some language in there going like reasonably known to the accused, reasonably observed by the accused, some, something like that, so that we don't have frivolous claims. And that this doesn't open up the door to things that might, you know, not be worth staff's time or the community's time to deal with.
Are there other council members that support that effort? I'm not hearing any. Perhaps before this comes back to us for vote, or after first reading, there'll be an opportunity for you to refine a little bit of kind of how you see that playing in, and maybe we can consider that at a later time.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions or requests for information? Seeing none.
Thank you much.
Thank you. Awesome. And Bill, I think that would be maybe under the enforcement. Where should I pull another chair from? Where that kind of language would sit. No, I get what you're saying. I, I know, I'm just looking for where that language would sit.
Yeah, I don't know, is the answer. I don't, I don't write this for them, but, but I appreciate the, uh...
Well, just, just whatever language you're thinking of, where it would fit.
Thanks.
Or, or if it needs its own section. All right, next up on our agenda this evening is an Armory Hall progress update.
All right, sorry about that. Good evening. My name's Jen Phelan. I'm the Development Manager for the City of Aspen. And tonight, we'll be talking about Armory Hall. It's remodel and reuse. And I have a number of people joining me up here this evening that I want to introduce. We have Rob Schuber, the Capital Asset Director, Todd Kennedy with CCY Architects. We have, sorry, let me move that. We have Garrett Simon with Immersed, and Beau Breck with Ripple Creek Properties. Today, we're going to be reviewing the programming concepts for Armory Hall that were presented at a open house on July 31. And what we're trying to, what we feel is critical tonight to get from council is we'd like to accomplish a couple of things so that we can continue to make progress on this project. We'd like to... All right. All right, sorry about that. We'd like to provide you an update of where we've come from. We'd like to talk about confirming the concept and programming of the building so that we can advance the project. And we're looking for a direction on the design approach with a couple of items being the public realm, the approach to Hopkins, and the building frontage along the right-of-way. So a little refresher of how we arrived to this point in time. We've had two past votes in this community. They were advisory. But in 2015, we had a vote to see if the community would like to see this, the Armory Hall site be used for community use. That passed in 2015. And then in 2018, when the community was considering in the city a new city offices, there was a vote to see if the preference was for expanding the site at Armory Hall and across the street along Hopkins, or to develop where City Hall is today at the present site of Rio Grande and the Galena Plaza site. We really started going forward with this project in 2022. We had a February work session in 2022, and what we got out of that work session was confirmation of, via a resolution passed by council. It confirmed the outreach strategy that we'd take for that year. It outlined some anticipated uses that the council thought would be in the building, and it also adopted guiding principles for this project. Later in the year, we did some extensive public outreach. We did two rounds. We did two rounds of public outreach in 2022. We'll talk a little bit more about that later. We had two community surveys, and then we had an open house and three focus group meetings. And the intent of those meetings was to first identify the uses the community was interested in seeing housed in Armory Hall, and then ensure that we heard correctly in that first round of outreach, what the community said, and refine anything as needed. In 2023, we had another open house, and this time, based on the information that, based on the information that we gathered in 2022, we looked at some high-level sketches of potential programming in the building, looking at the uses that were identified, and I'll talk about those in a bit. Those uses that we, that the community had talked about in 2022 were casual dining, community center, multipurpose space, nonprofit services, and lower price point retail. That's what came out of 2022. So in 2023, we show these high-level plans, and what it showed was the community was prioritizing food and food halls, and mixed uses in that building. We had a work session with council after the open house in October of 2023, and that's where a resolution was passed, where council prioritized the uses in order, noting food, food hall, community lounge, affordable retail, flex space, and visitor center as the prioritized programming for Armory Hall. Since there, then, we contracted with a full design team, and we've done one additional round of outreach. And that was held in the end of July. So the end of July, we had an open house, we had, we had about 90 people attend, and we had 74 responses to the community survey that we undertook this just recently. What we showed at this open house were two concepts. One was very food-oriented, primarily food hall, the other was food-oriented with other uses in it. And this most recent open house, and the survey substantiates it, that the food mixed-use concept is the preferred concept of the community. And we'll talk more about the results later after we show these concepts. You know, throughout this process, we've heard numerous things, but really, people are seeing this space as potentially serving as the heart of the community, a place people can gather. They'd like to see more casual dining in Aspen, and, and a place that people can meet and have different events. So I think with all the outreach we've done, it's, it's pretty clear people are interested in food and a mix of uses in this building. And what we'd, what we'd like to talk about now, and I'll turn over to Garrett and Beau, is to discuss what the team has considered in developing a successful program. These measures that we'll be talking about are community benefit, vitality and vibrancy, and sustainable investment.
Thanks, Jen. Garrett Simon, happy to be here this evening. So, starting with the community benefit, and I, and with the options you'll see tonight, first looking at kind of the heavy food and food hall type program, and understanding what the building would need there, but from a community benefit standpoint, trying to look at it due to the significant investment that this project is going to require, is how do we create a, almost a Swiss army knife, right? From a, a community user and vitality. So we look at things like multi-generation appeal, attainable offerings, uses beyond just food and beverage. And I think one that is, hasn't been discussed a lot, but is the opportunities for local talent, whether it's culinary artists, makers, but looking at it almost from the other side of the lens, is not necessarily the demand side, but the supply side. From a vitality standpoint, again, with this investment, is how do you turn this building on in the morning through the evening? And then four seasons. Strong curb appeal, huge opportunity there. And then creating a space that is flexible and adaptable. Obviously, there's been a lot of discussion about where the operator is, and look forward to getting into that as we move forward, but creating something that, as I like to say, kind of shapes the table enough to have intelligent conversations, but then also allows the building and program to evergreen. From just a pure food, food hall standpoint, that is one of the appeals, is that concepts are ever-changing, right? And the program with the building is ever-changing. And so, again, it allows different culinary concepts to come in and be successful, but it's also keeping it vital. It's significantly more than just changing one menu like you would in a typical restaurant.
Can I, can I, can I interrupt for one second? I'm sorry, but I just want to check in with, with council members right now. We can hear the, the presentation, but are council members still interested in Concept One, food hall-centric? Or are council members looking at Concept Two, mix of uses? And, and the reason I ask this is because, as we just went through that history, I, I really, I, I just think that we've gotten off of, off base here a little bit. The food hall-centric as a proposal came from the design team at a time when I, I wasn't sure that that was even in our conversation. But it, it came back to us because it made some fiscal sense, or something like that. And, and I just wanted to know, is that something that council members see or have a vision for, for this facility? Because if not, then we could, we could move on and focus our energies on a second concept that also has food in it, but, but other mixed uses. So can I just get some input from folks? John?
Yeah, I have two concerns with the direction the Armory's going right now. Number one, I have concerns about the other food operators in town and what this does to their businesses, and if some of them might be offered a space in the building. And then the other question I have is, now I've lost my train of thought, I'm sorry. Oh, goes back to what we were just discussing with the Theater Aspen space, actually. The concept of, are we planning on a food court, and maybe what if that concept doesn't work? Is this going to be as flexible and adaptable as we need it to be? Those are the two concerns I have.
Bill?
I am interested in exploring Option One. I think that Option One could be improved, but when I'm looking at the feedback that was solicited over this extensive community outreach process that, that the team did, everywhere I see, you know, kitchens, restaurant vendors, number one priority, food, affordable food, number one priority. So, so that does prioritize it. I don't, I'm, I'm not saying that I need it to be 100% of the use, but I don't want to throw out something that, that is what's desired, just because it's not perfect, so.
You know, that, that feedback was not about asking what your only priority would be. It was, it was always about that mixed use. That, that input was really, was really garnered around a mixed use, and the food component was an important thing for, for any scheme that went in there, but it, it wasn't prioritized as questions weren't asked, would you like to see only food there? It, it, it was a part of, of, of any scheme, I, I totally agree, and I think it should still be there. But as far as being just a food hall, I, I, that conversation never really was the, the conversation in, in the room or on this project. But while you bring it up, Bill, I, I could go back even further with this, you know? The advisory votes that were taken on this were also somewhat, I would say, weren't informative enough for the public. You know, the first question was asked about, do you want to maintain this as city offices, or would you like to see community uses? That's pretty easy, I think, for anybody to kind of support that community uses, and yet that question itself only passed by a narrow margin. So, so the path that this has gone on has, has, I think diverted from kind of the intention. You yourself just said that while you agree with food hall service, and maybe it's even food hall service forward, you also want to see some other uses in the building. So I'm just, I'm just taking temperature, because I don't want to waste our time talking about something that we're not supportive of. Sam, can you just chime in? I mean, we can hear the, the, we can hear the presentation, it's all good, I'm just wondering where your head is at on this?
Yeah, I went to the open house, and I thought the Option One with seven made Option Two look a lot better. I think three to five is that sweet spot, so.
Thanks. Ward, your level of interest between Concept One and Concept Two?
Well, I think Option One supplies some multiple use. My concern is that seven different vendor, culinary vendors is going to be difficult to accomplish. I have some concerns with Option Two, but I'm in the Option Two direction rather than pursuing Option One.
Thank you for that. I have the similar feelings, but a little bit stronger than that. I don't see the, the Concept One as either delivering to the community what they were asking for, or necessarily being fair and equitable to existing vendors. And that's a lot of the feedback that I've heard back from the community. So I, I, I can tell you, I, I'm not supportive of Concept One, and would like to spend more time on Concept Two. For the sake of your presentation, if there are some more points and highlights that you want to bring forward on Concept One, we can do that, and then move on to Concept Two.
If, the majority of council prefers Concept Two, that's what we should focus on.
I'm hearing that there is a majority that is concerned, has more concern about Option One, and is more supportive of Concept Two. So if you'd like to go forward, but what I'm saying is, if there are items that need to be touched on that talk about Concept One themes that you want to bring out, that's great, and then we can move to Concept Two.
I think that's, one of the things I, I do want to talk about is creating a successful project, and what does that look like to council? Because I'm not sure we're all on the same page.
Oh, I can tell you, we're probably not.
Yeah. But, you know, we've had some discussion about what does successful, a successful project look like? We have talked in the financial realm, council said a modest return was what they were comfortable with, that something that was self-sustaining operational-wise and potentially capital improvement over time-wise was what you were looking at. So that's something that we have been talking about, is how do you create uses that will provide a modest return? I think you're looking at a big investment of, of capital to create this project, and it can be programmed with whatever you want, but if you want a place where provides, you know, an underwhelming experience, or something that isn't vibrant, I think the community loses as a whole. So that's why we have private sector developers here to talk about what they feel brings success to a project. So I, I hope you will listen to what they have to say in considering programming, moving in on this project. I also want to push back a little bit, Tori. You keep saying food was not a priority, and I think if you look at the.
A, a priority on a list of four, I agree with you.
But it always came up.
I agree with you.
And, and yeah, and it does have other priorities.
I don't think, I don't think the questions when they were asked in, in the, in the meetings that I've been to, and the open houses that I've attended, and the surveys that I've seen, I don't think it was ever put forward as, as just a food hall. But nonetheless, I agree with you, if there are lessons to be learned from Concept One, I would love to hear them. I understand about kind of what you're saying, the, the sustainable investment and the financials, I, I get that. And maybe that's a question we should have first, because when we're talking about the pro forma that makes this work, there's, you know, different levels of potential subsidy and, and the like, so.
So I'm going to direct staff to just continue their presentation. We've spent more time figuring out what we're going to talk about, that we probably would have been through it by now. So I would really like to get back on track and, and continue where we left off.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, so I think, talk a little bit more about what we've considered for trying to make sure this is a community successful project, not necessarily just monetarily successful, but somewhere people want to gather.
Yeah, and I, and I think confirming the direction of the focus on Option Two, and the ideas of how do you create enough variety, but not be in a place where you have too much supply. And I think that's where we went in terms of sensitizing Option Two, in terms of the kitchen count, and addressing issues when kitchen turnover and whatnot, but enough ballast of options there to keep it interesting for people, but then also providing alternative uses. The reality is, this will not be perfect. And it's how do we create a, a program in a building that, again, can evergreen and change as a community's needs and desires change, with the littlest amount of additional capital investment, whether it's five years, 10 years, or 15 years down the road?
Hey, Beau Breck here. I'll just add that our team has been working hard to try to define success for this project. And so, you know, these are the concepts and ideas that we've come up with to define and measure success of the project as we carry forward. But really welcome any feedback and input from council on how you guys are defining success, or how you view that. I think that would be very helpful guidance for the team, and making sure that we drive forward towards your expectations.
So I think we'll focus on Option Two as we move forward. And so Todd is going to be talking about characteristics of each program, and the thought that went into developing the program.
Yeah, I think to, to begin with Option One, just very briefly, because, because clearly, I think the, the momentum, I think not only from, from all of you, but from the design team and the conclusions we've drawn, is that, as Garrett said, the, the sort of Swiss army knife of Option Two is, is the one that is going to serve a broader cross-section of the population, and it's the entire cross-section of the Aspen community that's going to fund this project. So we really took a lens at, how does this project serve the widest swath of, of Aspen's population, locals, tourists, Down Valley residents, the, the whole community? So Option One, again, we, we really pressed on this idea of, how do we maximize revenue? How do we think about making this just financially viable? Which, which is where we really landed at Option One, in terms of, does Seven Kitchens really push a more financially viable model? And as we worked with Garrett and Beau, and reviewed this option with them, sort of drew the conclusion that, given the size of the market in Aspen, that Seven Kitchens versus Five Kitchens does not mean that much more revenue coming into the overall project, because there's only so many meals being served in Aspen, there's only so many seats that can be filled. So we pivoted to look at, what does it look like to dial back from Seven Kitchens to Five Kitchens? And if we go to the next slide, Jen, that brings us to Option Two. And Option Two was really focused on, how do we check more of those boxes? How do we serve more of the community? So we looked at dialing back from Seven to Five Kitchens. Our seat, approximate seat count went from 330 seats to 220 seats, again, approximately. One of the big differences we wanted to drive home here was this idea that the ground floor could create engaged, an engaged retail environment, and retail could mean lots of different, different things. In addition to the five. In addition to the five kitchen spaces, we have what we've referred to as four non kitchen vendors. Part of why we think this is important is that we need to attract a good operator to this project, to run this project. And part of attracting a good operator is what Garrett and Beau have coined as operational flexibility. And so that flexibility of having spaces available, whether that's for local artisans, for boutique retail, whether that one of those spaces becomes an Accra visitor center booth, whether one of those spaces is a non food F and B item like an ice cream parlor, a coffee stand, or um a deli counter. It creates more opportunity for the future operator to find leases to take advantage of these spaces. Additionally, what we did is we said that the community flex space, while we've provided a mezzanine in both option one and option two that is programmed specifically as the community lounge, a place where the community can gather, have small meetings, meet without an obligation to be purchasing food or beverage from the food hall establishment. We felt it was important to create a flexible space that allowed for a multitude of uses. We located that space in the lower level. One of the things we've contemplated that we'll speak to more is re-creating redesigning the light well to the current lower level of the armory so that it's a more compelling space, so that there's more daylight and so that there's a stronger connection to Connor Park. As we move to the next slide, we'll talk more about the idea of how the building needs to connect to the public realm. If we could go to the next slide, Jen. This is just a diagram that speaks about how the building connects from inside to outside. And we see one of the best opportunities for this project to activate Hopkins and create a more engaged street front, create a building that has more engagement, as Garrett said, more curb appeal. But beyond that, we also think that the connection to Connor Park is invaluable in terms of not benefiting the food hall, but benefiting the community. We've thought about how do we expand the light well to reach into the park and expand the park to reach into the armory? So that through a new light well connection, Connor Park is connecting to the lower level in the community serving flexible spaces that could accommodate lectures, could accommodate small nonprofit galas, could accommodate art galleries, could accommodate what we've referred to as a winter market, which you could think of as an expansion of those retail vendors upstairs at the times of year where it might make sense to have retail booths in in the armory such as at the holidays or peak of summer season, July fourth, et cetera. Yeah, I I think one other thing, and again, we'll touch on this, that we're we're contemplating and we've worked with parks. We've just started the process of working with parks in terms of collaborating with them on what the potential for this connection to Connor Park. And beyond that, the design team is fo- focused on, is there a worthwhile exploration of giving up some parking on Hopkins to create a larger right of way to again, not just create outdoor space that's about serving the food hall, but creating outdoor space in one of the best sun pockets in town that's about a place to gather as a community, to meet a friend? You can come in and buy some food, buy a beverage, whatever you want. But again, this activated Hopkins is not about just serving the food hall, it's about the broader community.
Um, just to talk a little bit about the open house, and I'll I'll be brief. We um we had the open house on the thirty first. We had eighty ninety people attend, less than last October, but still a good turnout. And we also did a two week survey where we had seventy four responses, again, a little less than what we've gotten in the past. The community's preferences for um option two, they want to see a mix of uses. People thought it had the most meaningful um uses for the community. Like I said, seventy percent of the respondents preferred option two. And people are excited about features such as the restaurant, the vendors, flexible space and indoor outdoor bar of that um that um design. You know, again, of the preferences for the uses, food came in at the top, flex space came in second. Expansion of the um public realm came in third. Uh, that tied with an indoor outdoor bar. Accra and non food vendors came up um after that. And with regard to designing the public space, there was support, as I said, for greater connectivity. And there was support from for some loss of um Hopkins Street parking to expand that public realm.
So as we move forward from here, I think the goal is to break this really down into three discussion points. The first being the confirmation of the concept and the program. Obviously, we've already talked about recommended o- option, we'll revisit that. We're going to talk about Accra as well. The second would be the approach to the building frontage. This is the the building's facade itself and and again, thinking about how we look to great create some great curb appeal. And then again, is a discussion with all of you about the the expansion of the Hopkins Public Realm and a a connection to Connor Park. At this point, we want to allow this to be back and forth in the discussion and not go through all of these, but start with point one and the recommended option, get feedback and then move on to Accra, get feedback and continue through the remainder of the work session is more of a back and forth than us us sitting in front of you, talking at you. So with that, we'll go to the the next slide. Bill, did you?
No, I thought you were ready for for feedback, but whenever whenever you want to pull up the the schematics of two, I'm happy to give some feedback.
I I think with the clarity of um, you know, that that Tori's created in terms of a a strong preference towards option two and the flexibility and the sort of the multi use. You know, this this might be beating a dead horse a little bit to to that point. But I think in terms of um the conclusion we had drawn uh was that option two felt like it was going to achieve a successful project for how we were d- defining success. And that was to those points that that Beau and Garrett were were speaking to earlier. We think the the F and B is an anchor, the food hall is an anchor to this building can drive use from early in the morning till late into the evening. But subsequent to that, the idea of these non kitchen vendor spaces, again, whether one of those becomes Accra, whether those are non kitchen F and B spaces or local artisans selling um things they've created or an entrepreneur that's created a new clothing brand based out of Aspen that that is looking for an inexpensive way to to get their foot in the door into a brick and mortar space. Beyond those those two primary uses of the F and B anchor and those retail vendors, we've thought about this idea of the community lounge, again, this mezzanine space that's just dedicated to ongoing community use it throughout the operating hours of of the food hall. And then, of course, we we already touched on it, but is this idea of the the flexible community space in the basement? And how does that allow this building to serve a multitude of uses and meet a multitude of demands from the public in terms of creating an opportunity for that flexible space? And with that, you know, in terms of discussions around programming, you know, we we tried to approach this in the community engagement event as a a non binary, non binary discussion that there were, if there were things in option one, you know, we designed in option one and it had a a floor plan and a footprint. We designed in option two and it had a different and distinct floor plan and a footprint. But we said to the the community and will say to you, if there's something about option one that benefits option two, we are at a spot in the design process where there is a lot of room to flex, grow, learn from your comments. So we'd we'd love to hear more discussion from council on on option two. What's working in your minds about it? What's not working? What else you might like us to consider?
Thank you. Uh, a couple of quick questions. Did you, did you run numbers? Did you run hypothetical numbers? Did you run pro forma on this this stuff?
We did. I'll I'll maybe let Garrett speak to that.
Yeah, and to be specific, we ran an oper- an annual operating budget for both of them. Uh, I wouldn't call it a pro forma because it doesn't include development costs, so all the construction costs. So it was basically once up and running, what those look like. As Todd mentioned, the ability to have additional space for events, groups and generate, you know, whether you choose to generate revenue or that. The difference between the two is negligible because of where we see overall just total dollars from a, call it an F and B demand. And the model as it's set up in tr- traditional food halls, the operator is only getting a percentage of the food revenue. Um, and so it's not, there's not a significant swing in total revenue when you drop two kitchens off.
And and then I was kind of wondering, not necessarily the difference between option one and two when it comes to um doing the financials, but where where are we with uh option two on financials for a sustainable model? Have we have we estimated annual operating costs? And then you have backed into option two's space allocations based on square footage, revenue generation potentials?
Correct, yes.
Okay, and so I would love to see those because the the input that I'm going to have on option two are are going to kind of be questioning uh that model and how we get to something that is sustainable uh for the community. You know, I can anticipate and probably could support a certain level of direct subsidy for building operations. But I don't really know what that, what the magnitude of that would look like because I I don't know what the pro forma looks, the operating pro formas look like. So um let's go with, you're asking for some input on option two. So why don't we do that?
Yeah, and and one thing I wanted to address, and I think Garrett and Beau could chime in here too. John had brought up concerns about, you know, other local restaurants and local local vendors. I think we've had a lot of discussion about that. The the goal in I think all of our visions, and I when I say are, I mean, this whole room's collective vision for this project isn't to put pressure on existing business owners. It's really to create opportunity for the community. Um, I think any existing business owner um as an operator is brought on board would be welcome to participate and lease a space in here for either their current concept or a second concept, should they choose to pursue it. You know, this isn't about trying to limit the amount of counter service establishments in Aspen. It's actually about trying to increase the number of counter service establishments in Aspen. So we just want to really focus on again on, we think this is about creating opportunity for attainable food and getting everybody at the table to create a spot for the community that serves the community.
Uh, appreciate that. I mean, you know, the restaurant operators that are here uh have concerns about this. And 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 for them, uh, you know, government reduced rate subsidized space, however you want to call it, is um direct competition. So just very much by opening new counters, as you just said, um, that is what is a threat to them. That is what they see as a threat. So uh, you know, that's something that we hear all the time and I've heard for years and years and years. Beau?
I just would like to address the s- comment regarding subsidy or reduced rate and that the operating budgets put forward at this time contemplate market rent, market based percentage rent consistent with, you know, the market up here. So there's, at this time on the team, there's been no envisioning of subsidizing of any of the food vendors in any way. It's it's creating more spaces for more folks to um hopefully come sell goods and services.
Okay, well, for council members that, you know, that's another difficult proposition. If we are going to be charging market rate to um operators in this space, then you are you are less likely to be returning the affordability factor that we are hoping to have incorporated here perhaps. A- a- as we go through comments, we'll talk about a little bit of subsidy and where we're at. But um we don't have those numbers in front of us, so it's kind of hard to even judge the magnitude of of what that'll look like. So let's go through some comments. You're asking for some feedback on option two, uh, design elements, if you will, so let's uh, we'll start there. I'll start with Bill.
Thanks. Beau, you took the words out of my mouth there on the subsidy. I think that's an important thing to understand. And and I think that Aspen has a reputation right now uh for a lot of people that it's too expensive to even come visit. You know, even if you're not paying for a place to stay, if you're driving through for the day, there's nowhere to get lunch, there's nowhere to get dinner. So that's something I certainly hope to counter with this. And and that's not a knock on on some of the my most treasured establishments in Aspen that are affordable, but we just don't have a lot of them. And and some more variety would be good and um I think would be quite complimentary to the existing and not not threatening. Jen, I'm hoping we can pull up the schematics of option two. I I can live with option two, but I do think that it can be enhanced and improved. Do you have that on one of the slides? If not, I can just talk through it, whatever's easier.
We've got option one and two side by side at the in in an appendix to this presentation.
I meant the the the, um, yes, the graphical plans. So I I can certainly live without the self service bar. I don't think that's a critical component at all. I I want to make sure I think that I'm reading this correctly, that the five food vendors are proposed on the main level. Is that accurate?
There's actually two on the main level, three on the upper level. The four retail vendors, as we've been calling them, are on the main level with two food vendors.
Okay, so that that's one of my biggest concerns about about this plan is I think you're going to end up with two very busy, successful um vendors and three that struggle and turnover all the time. But here's some ideas. Could the restrooms be relocated to one of the different floors and create some more space for for food vendors on this floor? I I'd really like to see those all be synergistic to one another and on the same level, if if at all possible. I I'm okay with non food vendors. I think I've seen it done really nicely elsewhere and I think it could bring something interesting to this to this development. You know, if they were all sprinkled on the same floor, that'd be great, but if they need to be distributed, that would be um secondary to my primary desire to have the food vendors all on the same level. The game room piece from option one, I think, is missing from option two. And if there's any way to incorporate even a taste of that would be huge. I mean, there's nowhere to play pool at all in Aspen, except maybe the Aspen Youth Center, I think might be the only pool table.
There's more.
Are are there? Silver City, right. Uh, I forgot about that, but very, very limited. I think it'd be great to have a little bit more of that. You know, s- s- for all ages, right? Not something that's only available for for twenty one and up and at night. So I think I I would love to see some of that incorporated into option two. And then I think lastly, in terms of floor plan, I've always been concerned and and this makes me especially concerned that the back of house space is just not adequate for this operation. And and I've never operated a food hall, so I'm not speaking from a space of tremendous experience here, but that just doesn't look like a ton of space to me and brings a lot of concern to me.
The back of house space?
Just not being adequately sized, yeah, to support the upstairs needs.
Kitchen facilities, that?
Yeah, kitchen refrigeration, ware washing, receiving, um, storage, et cetera, et cetera. All all the things that are necessary to make a, you know, a ten by ten or whatever these these. What what's the average size allocated to each of the food vendors?
The typical kitchen is two hundred and fifty to three hundred square feet.
Right.
Um, and we worked with Garrett and his team at a Merse who who operate two food halls to really dial in that back of house space as well as the footprint for the kitchens. Each kitchen, I'll let Garrett speak to this in more detail i- if necessary, is really equipped with their own refrigeration, their own ware wash. That's all internalized to each individual kitchen. So there is no commissary other than some bulk storage um in the back of common back of house space.
Okay, again, I'm not the expert in the room. You guys are, and I certainly respect and appreciate that, but graphically, it just feels small to me.
I would like to hit on the, if it's all right, the the two story. It's interesting. We actually pursue two story buildings um when with the food halls concept. Both of ours, uh, what we did here is actually put the go three upstairs to have more ballast to draw people up. The idea, I mean, the beauty of a food hall is kind of the ghost, the exploration of moving through the building. And have found that in both of our locations, our best kitchens are upstairs. Obviously, that's because they have great product. But it is a, and it's a hard one to flip off the traditional kind of easy use right main floor. And I think this is consistent across even outside of where we operate. Uh, the second floor space uh does really well. Uh, it has to be cool space, right? You can't feel like you're crawling up into an attic, but you kind of create the insurance policy by putting the, you know. But you kind of create the insurance policy by putting the, you know, majority of the kitchens up, in this case, three versus two. And that drop, draws people up, and it's really this experience of, you know, go somewhere, do something. And really, um, you know, crawl through the building to, to see what the different offerings are.
And I'd, I'd add to that, to the point about great space. I, I think in terms of just the bones of the building, that historic second floor is by far the most compelling space architecturally within the armory. And so I think there is a draw to that in terms of its architectural character. And then with what Garrett and Bo have shared in terms of their experience with two-story food halls, um, we felt comfortable pursuing that, but definitely hear the concern and, and certainly worth some debate.
Bo, do you share that opinion?
I do, um, you know, I look at a very successful food hall down in Denver, Avanti. There's five kitchens downstairs, two up. Um, it's sort of the better bar, actually, is upstairs and um, better outdoor space. So, you know, I think we landed there very much by intention with the idea that, um, you know, really, I think there was not sufficient space to really locate five kitchen vendors and a full bar and all the seating you would need. And then certainly not enough space for anything else to fit on that level. And obviously, um, some seeking direction on what else needs to go on that level. So given all those limiting factors, um, we intentionally located more kitchens upstairs with the idea of, okay, let's draw people upstairs and drive the traffic there, there.
Interesting. All right, well, it, it, again, it gives me pause, makes me a little uneasy. My guts telling me that, that doesn't make sense, but you guys are living and breathing in this every day. I'd still really recommend getting the restrooms off the first floor, putting them in the lower level. Um, you know, it's gonna be elevator serviced and have that beautiful staircase. I don't know why we use up our prime street level with a huge restroom block, so.
One thing that I'm wondering if, if we might speak to, cause, cause I think it will be a, a discussion point just to sort of lay the groundwork for, for this part of the discussion is five kitchens versus, say, three kitchens. And Garrett and Bo, I, I wonder if you, you two might just speak to how we arrived at five is a number versus something less than five in terms of this, this option?
A- a- and included in that, I, I was wondering about the concept of a master kitchen. Uh, you know, I agree with what's kind of being said here, the, the, the upper level, three different kitchens up there. Why not have one operator that, that was running that as a, a dining space, event space, et cetera? I, I, I mean, those are gonna be some of my questions in my input coming up. But um, you know, to me, it's still just, uh, it's, it's just, it's restaurant, it's just restaurant heavy. Um, so yeah, I'd appreciate a conversation about why five different kitchens?
Yeah, I, I think it goes back to, again, variety. Um, and starting in a place of how is it, how do you have enough variety to make it interesting so that you are getting multiple visits a week from individuals, families and whatnot? Um, you always have to take into account the turnover. You can probably circumvent how quickly someone can turn over a kitchen, but typically it's thirty to forty-five days if we were doing it. So you always are challenged with this idea, and some of these, you know, annual, right? The, I mean, that is the beauty of how we're structured, is that you have somebody come in um, with a concept that is, it's a relatively low risk. They come in with their knives and food and start selling right away. Um, you know, we, some people have decided this is not for them, and great, and they've gone through their first year license or two and move on. So then the idea is, how do you have enough, uh, again, even when you consider that, how do you have enough um, interesting concepts? I, I think the question about the master kitchen is, do you wanna be authentic or not? And, and I think the idea of having, you know, I look at that, excuse me, like a ghost kitchen. Somebody's in there cooking a, a bunch of different menus, and it's coming out in different brands. And I think that's where it goes back to this idea of, is this also the opportunity to highlight and give local culinary talent an option to get started? Because of, again, it's a, it is an easy opportunity to come in and get, and start offering something or a concept that's been vetted.
Are, are you suggesting that some or all of these kitchens would be done on a one-year lease, on a six-month lease?
It just depends. I mean, what typically, what we do is you start with a one-year license, two or three. They always have the option to renew if they're doing well. They have sales thresholds that they have to meet so that if at any point the concept is not being well-received, you can turn it out. Um, but that is the, again, if, if we're focused on this idea of a food hall fundamentally, the idea of easy in and out, um, because you're preparing a turnkey kitchen, um, that is the benefit of, of what this structure is.
Tons of concern. We don't have the same pool of restaurateurs. We don't have the same ability for turnover every, a, 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 a ton of concern. Um, I appreciate the models that you're working off of. I, I'm just not sure that they are um, uh, this, in a similar environment here. But let's keep moving on, let's keep moving on.
And I would, you know, I, we looked at comps, like, there's a food hall in Steamboat, similar concept, does really well. Um, and we took that into account to adjust for, call it from a primary market to a market that's more reflective of Aspen. If you, if, I, and I, I guess what I would say is if there is somebody that you wanna come in and sign three or five-year uh, licenses or leases with, and you keep one kitchen that's on a shorter lease so you can constantly turn. I think you have to come back and find the right uh, mix and curate that experience. I will tell you, if you had five kitchens in here and you signed them all on five-year leases, okay, but I don't think that is bringing potentially the vitality that you wanna see or that this potentially has to offer. So we just need to, you're really ultimately gonna sensitize that based on the market. And that are, those are discussions that you can go out, obviously, as you're moving forward before you're signing leases to see how much depth there is in, in this market.
The reality is, not every vendor is going to be successful, and we need to consider that.
Yeah, I just know what it takes to get leases done and put people into spaces, and it takes a long time around here. And so I, I've just, I have a lot of concerns about, about the model for this, but uh, we'll keep going on. Uh, thank you, Bill, any other?
I think I'm good, thank you so much.
Okay.
And, and thanks for the great open house, um, the last one was, was really excellently done.
John, input?
Uh, yeah, Jen, is there any way you could put up an image of the south, uh, south elevation of the armory? I know there's, I saw one in your, in your slide back.
With the Hopkins Avenue?
Yeah, Hopkins Avenue facade.
Not, not, not the south elevation, just the overview that included the Hopkins?
Just, actually, just an image of the ar- yeah, right there. Um, so I'm excited about the possibility of activating this southern exposure because it is sunny and it's gonna be a very welcoming indoor and outdoor environment. Uh, I think one of those windows has already been changed into a doorway previously, so. Um, anyway, I'm super excited about the possibility, that and the, the access to Connor Park. Now, I'm reading about on page, well, about, let's review the options of the key features of option one and option two. And what I see is uh, there are some things on option one that I'd like to see included on option two. One would be the entrance and dining experience on Hopkins Avenue and the engagement with Connor Park through extended, expanded light well and seating opportunities. I think those are two parts of this project that are really going to make it uh, very user-friendly and um, an incredible space.
So you like the interfacing with the exterior?
Exactly.
Okay. Any other comments or input or questions?
I think my initial comments covered my concerns.
Sam?
Yeah, uh, I agree with John and I agree with Bill about uh, those pluses and concerns. Um, yeah, same level of all spaces if possible, but once again, I trust you guys. Um, pool table, shuffleboard, sort of that game center activation, I think, is really nice. We lost Eric's around here, and uh, this, that place does not need to be Eric's, but it, it um, definitely can have that vibe and definitely that welcoming atmosphere to actually have more activities involved on the inside. Um, the Accra Visitor Center, I do think, does need to be a part of this. Uh, we said up to a thousand square feet, so I hope that can be incorporated into option number two. Um, along with the US Forest Service. Uh, I think those two um, should be in there, and uh, especially because I hope they do increase volume, and I, I strongly believe that volume is gonna be the reason why this is successful. And uh, options for like big communal tables. I know, like in European food halls, a lot of times you end up like sitting next to other people and you, there's just a giant table that you can uh, do something with, but that's interchangeable. And then my last comment is just, um, you hear a lot of feedback up here, but I, I hope you go with the consensus and majority, but incorporate other concerns in there. But understand, um, I think this council is very supportive of what you've done, and I, I really look forward to actually moving forward with this and um, not delaying um, anymore, so thank you.
I have one more quick question, if I may.
Um, after Ward's comments.
Sure.
Ward, go ahead. This is for input or questions, uh, moving option two forward in some degree.
Yeah, I, I think on a previous slide, there were like four areas that uh, they wanted direction on, that team wants direction on. Are we just limiting these comments to option two right now?
Yeah, we're, we're gonna have to ask some specific questions if you want us to get to schematic.
Okay, my um, my comments on uh, option two, um, you know, I questioned whether we need two full bars and if that's limiting uh, use by, uh, use by youth. I understand the revenue uh, generation from full-service bars. Yeah, but I'm, I wanna make this uh, a place where our youth can hang out as well. Um, as far as uh, option two, three, um, event spaces, perhaps as, as uh, Bill and Sam, um, and I think John also said that uh, a game room uh, perhaps could be used uh, in one of those uh, event spaces. And where we have three on option two, three private event spaces, I'm concerned about privatizing um, this public asset. So um, a little concerned with that, you know, you know, I, 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 if we're gonna get back to it, um, the Hopkins um, Avenue, Hopkins Street um, activation. I know it's an old building, it's HPC, and we have many problems putting doors in there for curb appeal. But I think that's a, uh, that's attractive. Um, we're losing three or four parking spaces. Where are the guests for a future visitor center gonna be, are they gonna be on Warren's Alley? And I just wanted to mention, um, I, I trust the pri- I really appreciate the private sector knowledge uh, and input here and trust um, their experience to uh, guide us in how many kitchens and restaurants to have and the size of those. I don't wanna get into um, designing every aspect of this, leave it to the experts. But um, I really like the idea of perhaps taking some of Connor Pa- Park um, and widening or increasing the uh, um, light well and the entrance to the lower level that's, that exists now, uh, to open that space up.
Thanks, Ward. You had another comment?
Yes, thanks, uh, sorry, I missed this before, but the north side, the alley-facing space that's currently parking right now, uh, at some point, we talked about a addition, uh, or additions. You're not showing that in either of these options, is that accurate?
In this baseline option, we were uh, originally directed to not include an addition. And then as Accra has, has come up in the, the last month or so, we've started to consider where can Accra be accommodated. And one of those alternative locations we're considering is an addition in the alley. Um, that's not without its challenges from a sort of service yard MEP equipment standpoint, but we, we think it's maybe one of the best and, and most viable options for an Accra Visitor Center at the building.
So uh, graphically, what you were showing in one and two was MEP equipment, basically?
Correct.
And could that go on the roof of a one-story addition?
It can, other than some uh, difficult rules within Aspen's land use code that limit equipment height to six feet above any roof membrane. And most of the equipment that would be required and the efficiency that would be required for that equipment is going to exceed that six-foot height limit. So there's, there's a bit of a, a challenge there. We think it's likely a solvable one. Um, but to put equipment on the roof, we'd have to work with building department and zoning to, to figure out how to allow equipment of the size that will need to operate this as an all-electric facility and efficiently um, to allow that equipment on the roof.
And we could make that request to Board of Adjustments too, right? Okay, thanks, I, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna, um, I, I don't know that the five of us ever gave clear input on ye- yes or no on that uh, alleyway addition, so I don't want it to be forgotten. I know you're gonna talk about it specifically for those uses, but you know, maybe it's not where those uses end up. Maybe it's, maybe those go elsewhere in the building and, and this just enhances the program of the overhaul, overall armory. So um, I'm supportive of that addition. I wouldn't discount it or write it off yet at all, thanks.
Jen, should we go back to the plan? We haven't heard from Tori, Tori yet.
Ward, did you have something else?
Yeah, just a follow-up, that um, is it the intention that we deliver uh, built-out kitchens, a turn, turnkey kitchens? Uh, that that would not be upon um, desired or incumbent upon a, a lease or to come uh, somewhere in the, the yogi's uh, um, model where they, they come in and they complete a kitchen? Where the city's looking at uh, building uh, the kitchen spaces, that's a question.
So Ward, in May, we brought a initial operating budget to council, and um, that was developed by uh, the Amherst team, and I bought, brought, bro, uh, Bo on, sorry, um, at that time to do a peer review of the operating budget. Uh, both teams concluded that um, you would most likely not have much interest with any type of operator unless you did um, a turnkey uh, facility or had a very high um, tenant finish, I think, budget for, for that. At that work session, we discussed that issue, and it was my understanding that we would be looking at going to a uh, turnkey facility to draw the operator.
I would say operator and the kitchens. Uh, again, back to your point about how do you make this as enticing as possible? From a permitting standpoint, um, I, I think we always approach it that we do want to take care of all of that in terms of the kitchen build-out. Um, things that do happen, especially for those initial kitchens, you are able to provide a budget for kitchen equipment. So if somebody has a specific menu item that requires a specific piece of equipment, that can go in initially um, to meet their menu needs.
I also recognize um, Ward, that you did say you'd like some skin in the game at that work session.
Um, okay, thanks, Ward. Uh, okay, so my input uh, here is um, uh, did Jen share with you guys some of the work that I, I looked at the floor, floor plates and just gave her some ideas? She shared those with you and stuff?
She did.
Yep, and then um, have you guys also seen uh, some, Jen, did you share Bruce Atkins' um, schematic drawings that he did?
Bruce shared them with us directly through Rich Car.
All right, um, so my general comments are, for me, uh, it's still a little bit um, restaurant-centric. Uh, I agree with the, with Ward's question about the bars. Uh, I, I don't know that two isn't, two could be the solution, but where they are, uh, I think matters. I um, I continue to think about the upper floor. Uh, what's currently now the third floor over there is being a really wonderful opportunity for a community hall, event space. Um, I do think that a bar and a restaurant service could happen up there, but I could also see it being utilized for a lot more community events. So for me, that upper level, I think, um, could be utilized um, in a different way. We were talking about uh, game room or some type of family activity area. I totally agree with that. I don't know if that belongs in the bottom level or um, in some way um, uh, I don't know if that belongs in the bottom level or um in some way um uh flex space upstairs. But I I agree, that's that's what we really wanna get to here is uh family-friendly, community-serving. Um I am interested in a pro forma, an operating pro forma that might take some city subsidy uh on an annual, I'm okay with that. I don't think that um a full return should be our primary goal here. Uh I think the community use should be our primary goal here. I do question the five five kitchens, I wonder if there's not a more efficient way to go about that. Um I think that um with all respect, that your um private sector um experience and operations are just a little different than this. Um I have a lot of concern going forward that this is a space that is continually used. And what I know about that is that the can the community is gonna continue to have need for community space, that I know. So um restaurant and service, I I think that we have a lot, as a matter of fact, as I started making a list of the ten or twelve locally serving and affordable restaurants that are already in existence here. Uh and those are just sit-down places, that's not even counting places that are easier grab-and-go. But there are a lot of uh dining opportunities these days, we've seen several open, we have more coming online. I I don't know that um the capacity of a place like this at being two hundred and fifty people a day and how that's gonna play out. I'm very interested to see what a proposed operating pro forma looks like, what you really think that these spaces can do for revenue. That's why I was very excited about the top floor being open for event and community use. Um because one thing that we hear constantly is for a room that size, there's just a lack of availability and that which is in this community is extremely expensive. Um so uh just for uh a buyout of a top floor at the armory uh would be um probably in the tens of thousands of dollars just for the space. And then you've got the food and beverage service on top of it. Um you're talking about a place that could be a really great revenue generator on the top floor. When it comes to the outside space, uh you know, it looks great in these renderings, I don't know how it would really be on the ground, I don't have a feel for that. The concept that you're coming forward with here is obviously one that is um uh supported in our community, right? We're always looking for that outdoor space to be something that the community can enjoy. I would not wanna see, if this was to go forward, I would not wanna see that Hopkins Avenue table space be solely reserved for the restaurant service, it should be public access and usable and eh for anybody. Uh I love interfacing it with Connor Park better than it is, cuz right now the design of that building is difficult to really have those integrated whatsoever. There are a lot of uh things that you've put here in option two that I really like, I think that that's going in the right direction. For me, it's still a little bit restaurant-centric and it should be a little bit more community-centric. I see other opportunities for those uses of those those various floors. I also was hoping that instead of just the four vendor kiosks that seem to be somewhere like in the middle of a floor plan, I was uh hopeful that we could get a few more than that. Um you know, th- this has the opportunity to be somewhat of a year-round marketplace for locals and and the like, but it also could, if it was designed accordingly, it this could also be a wonderful uh holiday market where, you know, that top floor the bottom floor or something was utilized uh in that way and and really having something that could be an install and a takeover would be a really great opportunity for the community that we don't enjoy now. Yeah, that mezzanine concept, again, for me, I was looking for maybe a little bit more of uh uh utilization by local vendors. Again, I when I was going through it, I was kinda trying to think of per square foot revenue opportunities for us to offset the costs of of operations and maintenance. Um so again, that that uh mezzanine proposal, I think, that you had, that was also restaurant seating and stuff. I I I was wondering if that could be looked at as being a different usage as well. You know, those are my general my general comments, it's definitely moving in the right direction from where we were, I think, but uh for me, it's just a little bit more community-centric is 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 what I'm looking at. And uh again, like I said, I think if the city uh had an ongoing small subsidy there, that that would be okay as long as it was returning to the community, the uses that the community is hoping for. Yep, steps in the right direction, I still have a lot of questions.
So I feel like we need more direction.
Sure.
Um.
Do you wanna go to the four questions that?
Yeah. So we'll go back.
I think the the question on program, the the four questions, one was broadly program, you know, where to to take this. You know, so I guess specifically um that maybe the biggest question is number of kitchens and again revisiting the operating model, I suppose, in terms of Tori, I think I'm hearing you say that that you think maybe a central kitchen that does a variety of food concepts might make more sense, I don't know that I'm hearing that from the the rest of the council. I I think we just need clarity on some of the key fundamental program. The other questions we have are other design considerations that expand beyond program. You know, I think we could bring Accra into the discussion now as we continue this programming discussion and and talk a little more about that. And then the last two are really moving outside of the program and talking about architectural treatment. Um and again, the expansion of the Hopkins public realm, which I think we've generally heard support for, um provided it isn't just about serving the food hall.
So um I'll try to go through those one by one. So it's not about a master kitchen, but for example, I don't I don't know from what you just presented, what you were thinking of operation hours for those different spaces. So if you have a restaurant space on the mezzanine level that you guys have proposed, I believe, is there, uh that's a dining area, just an open?
Lounge.
Just a lounge.
A lounge, no kitchen facility.
Kitchen on the mezzanine.
So uh take the uh main level, one of the kitchens there. You know, are they doing breakfast? Are they doing pastries, coffee? Eh you know, I don't have any idea what the facilities are, so when I talk about a master kitchen, I'm just saying there's an efficiency here that could be happening, right? If you're if you're saying that you wanna give three hundred square feet kitchen over to somebody who serves espresso and and croissants in the morning, I I I don't know, that could be multi-used for a kitchen that somebody's serving lunch, I'm just saying there's some consolidation. I heard s- you know, s- similar questions from Bill about just even where the bathrooms are located and having that consolidated effort, uh vendors together and all that. So I think, I just don't have enough information, I don't know, I don't know the monetary pro forma that you're working off of, I I I just don't know, but um when we talk about, we'll go through these of confirmation of concept and program. Uh I think what you've heard here is confirmation of concept and program with questions. You know, there's, I think there's more detail that needs to be filled in that could give us more information about why the decisions were made that you're bringing forward to us for recommendations.
So I wanna talk about the density of kitchens and and try to get to a a general number of whether you are comfortable with the direction that the um design team has come up with. These are small kitchens, they have smaller menus, they have a smaller footprint. As Garrett said, because they are smaller kitchens, they'll have um just, you know, a certain amount of 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 menu options, so that's where we're looking at about five as the sweet spot to have enough variety and to also cover um when there's changes in vendors.
I guess I would ju- just add to that, absolutely, the a a standalone food hall model is, we're not recommending and saying that's the right fit, right? This has to be the Swiss Army knife. I think if you are seeing other opportunities within the community uh and we, you know, still have yet to address how we mitigate any conflict with the private sector and what this building is gonna offer from a public standpoint. If if you're seeing those opportunities elsewhere, there's concern about, I'll say, local talent and depth and based on the reality of turnover on kind of these young new concepts. I think one direction is, I guess where I go, i- it's kind of easy is, if you wanna go upstairs and make a community room, that's great, that's an easy thing to draw. It's a big open space and it's as flexible as possible. And I think it lends back to the self of, we don't we don't perfectly know what the community is gonna need in five years and ten years, and so how do we create as much flexibility as possible? If we if we are shifting away, you know, and and I think it's interesting of just getting away from calling it a food hall. This is more than a food hall. And and that mentality and lens and how you look at it, I think is paramount, both from community buy-in, but also from direction for the design team. And it's great, and so I think getting to a place where, at the end of the day, whether you're coming for food and event to buy something, all we care about is this building is being used based on the significant investment that's going into it. And I think alignment around that is critical and then getting your feedback, understanding from people on the ground experiencing this. Great, let's go with three kitchen, I mean, let's simplify this, let's go with three kitchens, bathrooms downstairs, figure out those um you know, non-F and B vendors, how do we maximize that? How do you push some seating up? The reality is, we want grab-and-go. How are we servicing people for lunch that are running between on their lunch break? They don't need a seat here. And I think, and also embracing the idea that this doesn't need to be so bar-forward. I've struggled with that personally, of like, how is this a family environment um where beverage is important? It's a huge driver for revenue. At the end of the day, the more you limit it, it's just gonna, you know, I'm not saying it's gonna increase the subsidy, but it's gonna move you in that direction. But that may be okay, that may be better serving for this community. And then as you move up, seating on the mezzanine and additional seating upstairs, but creating more flexibility, I think I I don't wanna overcomplicate this either, cuz it's kind of the kit of parts and how we pull together and it's relatively simple and this is great feedback to very, I think, quickly move forward to get something that everybody feels good with and then takes the next big step and figures out how much it's gonna cost. And I think ultimately, to your question about the pro forma, cuz that's the other piece, we can put an operating model together on an annual basis that says it's generating extra revenue, but we have no number that we're comparing it against of what the capital was that went into it.
One thing I think we should should add into discussion, again, Garrett and Beau, you might pick up where I leave off here in terms of expertise, is we heard at the last meeting that the the city does not wanna operate this facility. So the goal is to send out an RFP for an operator at the point that it makes sense in this process. And so in terms of some of the decisions we're making around revenue, aren't necessarily even just thinking about the revenue for the city, but it's how is this attractive to an operator? How do we get somebody to commit to say, I want to operate this facility and I can make a living doing that? So I think that's something we need to consider in this broader discussion of feasibility of getting an operator on board, because without an operator, the project dies on the vine. And so I think we've gotta take that lens of the market conditions of finding the building's operator into consideration as well in these discussions.
I think that's a great point, Todd, and that, you know, certainly has shaped my opinions and recommendations on this project of three being two little kitchens and five being much closer to a sweet spot. And so I just wanna expand or at least add on to Jen's point, which is you know, if there's three vendors with limited food options, limited menu items, that might not equal the offering of one full-service restaurant. So when you look at the space you have in the armory, how we wish to activate the space, that's partly how we land on really that five seems to be a better sweet spot, you wanna create something for everybody. And if the food and beverage is for the parents, I really appreciate the comments coming back from council about a game room, um cuz this is about creating something for everybody, so you know, things that we're trying to take into consideration is how do you make this a day, you know, a morning through nighttime used asset and then um how do you make it for something for, you know, across generations and for everybody in the community and how do you bring people in and then keep them there, hopefully, cuz they wanna stay? So that's certainly what has guided and shaped our our recommendations and the design in option two so far. And this feedback is really helpful for us to figure out what else can we incorporate in while still hopefully meeting what we believe is the market for these kind of assets.
Comment?
I'm gonna try to give some direction here from my perspective and hopefully others can add on theirs. I would like you to proceed with option two with some modifications suggested tonight, I think there was a lot of um commonality amongst that. Accra, uh as I've long said, I prefer a smaller footprint for Accra, I don't need to pick the specific location in the building that it goes can defer to you guys on that, but um my vision has always been more kiosk-sized and not room-sized. But I do think that they're an important component in there and and welcome them in there. I I love the engagement with Connor Park, I love the engagement with Hopkins, I support the the reduction of parking to spill out into Hopkins. Um I I support modifications to the building frontage to accomplish that. I'm excited about this. Any other points I missed? Any new direction on?
No, I think I'm pretty clear on.
Thanks.
Thanks. John?
Yeah, I wanna thank you for a great presentation, uh I think the images were fantastic, ga- really gave me a sense of what we're looking at and I'm thinking of this less of a food hall and more of like a student union building.
I totally think it could be a student union, but we still need the right uses and the right sum out throughout the building.
So you are confirmation of concept and program, recommended to option two, Accra, you support. But you, are you in-building or on the alley, does that matter to you at this time?
Hmm, the the letter we got from Accra seems like they're comfortable with a variety of concepts. Uh I'm gonna leave that up to the professionals and weigh in on it when we have some options.
Sounds great, and you already said that you liked both the Hopkins side and the Connor Park?
Absolutely.
Stuff, great. Uh Ward, would you like to chime in? Uh I I think you can see this list of bullet-pointed questions in front of you.
Yeah, I can see them and uh I um I support the option two. I think that five kitchens with short, short-term uh leases leading to longer-term leases to, um I think we should proceed and work on the uh details later. I'm not so sure that we should be um overly concerned with pro formas, because I think that the people that are gonna be leasing their spaces are gonna have to work on that. But it does lead us to what a percentage of uh subsidy might uh be needed. Uh and so I um I know it's gonna be a big hunk of money to get this thing built out and have five turnkey kitchens. Uh but if we don't, if we have free uh market rentals, I I I share the concerns expressed, I think, by Tori, that that might lead to um not having affordable uh eateries there, so uh I am open to a continuing subsidy. And I I wanna discuss uh putting Accra in Warren's Alley. Um I think that was the second choice, the first choice from Accra was in the main building. I was, I went down to Heron Park when the uh new bathroom was just locked down. And I'm wondering if something like that could be used in Warren's Alley so that uh uh the Accra would have its own space, uh its own hours, um and it could uh like the the bathroom in Heron Park came from Indiana all set, ready to go with uh fixtures and and everything else. I if that is, uh I think that would be a lot less expensive than what we looked at previously about an option um of building uh a full addition in uh Warren's Alley. So I I think that Accra should be there and as Sam said, the Forest Service should be there. Uh but I would uh like to entertain the possibility of a modular structure plunking down to house Accra. And I uh I think I expressed earlier, I I um I want the game room, I want uh activation on Hopkins and I do wanna in it integrate in the uh the uh Connor Park, increasing the um uh light well and making that a more inviting transition from from uh Connor Park into the uh spaces on the lower level.
Thanks, Ward. Sam?
Yeah, I echo uh Bill, John and Ward's comments. I uh asked that you please go to schematic and that we move this along, I think you've done tremendous work and we're heading in the absolute right direction. Um and the only thing I have to say about Accra and the visitor center to really think about is I don't care which side, but I know money is going to be an issue, so I think we should have both options as far as them in the building versus them in Warren's Alley. And the really deciding factor there is just going to be cost because I really don't think it actually matters all that much.
Thanks, Sam. Sure, go ahead.
Um, I'm in the camp of at least five food vendors and um. One reason I want everyone to contemplate is, you know, if someone specializes in a dessert item, that's more than likely all they do. So. If we only have three or four and one of them is taken up by a dessert item, ice cream or whatever. Um, shaved ice could be a variety of things that that's not going to provide any savory food more than likely, given the size of these kitchens. So. More is better from my perspective, at least five. Thanks.
Have an add in a question, please. Um. We have four non-food kiosks. Um. If we find that five kitchens aren't enough, can one of those be? It it would it be possible to have a mu- enough flex to convert a non-food into a food? So that we could go to six, let's say. Just the the degree of flexibility that uh, is in the design.
I think to a degree, the answer is yes, but there's always gray area and really what drives a kitchen is the line or the hood. That is over that line in terms of evacuating smoke and grease and heat. Um, so those four non-kitchen vendors easily become deli counter, dessert, ice cream, coffee. Um, food that uh, panini shop, food that does not require a line and a kitchen hood, yes. But more difficult to transition them into a full kitchen.
Thank you for that.
Uh, will you go back to your four bullet point questions for me, please? Thanks. Uh, confirmation of concept and program. Again, I've shared my reservations around some of the the factors there. Um, I think there's still more work to do as you guys recognize moving stuff around, possible game room and that kind of thing. Um, you know, I love some of the summary that you gave when you when you started comments before we started answering these. Um, uh, regarding the flex space upstairs, I think there's a lot of potential for that space as not just a revenue source. Um, but a really community um, space that that's welcoming to the community and utilized by the community as well as others. Uh, you know, I have a real concern about that upstairs space and a restaurant being up there. I can tell what the concept is going to go in what direction. That's going to be prime location. It's going to be a. High-end restaurant and bar paying market rate and they're going to be charging market rate. And so what I don't want to see myself. Is for high-end restaurants. I'm not looking for that usage here. So I would warn warn against that direction, but um. You have council is supportive of the overall concept right now. Uh, obviously I'm option two. Uh, when it comes to Accra, I really think that Accra has the potential to be something that does add vitality to this. Um, you know, as I I was saying recently, I I love the idea of a forest service educational informational uh, booth there as well. A place where people can uh, you know, get their uh, outdoor recreation permits and passes, et cetera. But also educates about what's going on. I think there's even more opportunity there. I'd love to see kind of a concierge desk where somebody could book their activities, book their restaurants. Um, you know, and the like. I I think that there's a real o- opportunity for. Uh, service and things that service people and thereby driving vitality by having people come in there. Um, just to share a real quick comment with you guys, uh, one years ago, I was over visiting a sister city in uh, Garmisch Partenkirken. And um, they had a just a wonderful integrated visitor's center that uh, was was equally about the locals as it was about the visitors. It was just vibrant and and uh, just. Serving so many different sectors and it was really great. Um, the building frontage or is that Connor Park stuff or the front?
We've actually had some slides we haven't gotten to yet. So I think we'll we'll circle back quickly to building frontage. Um, we've done some studies on how we might open the building and we'd we'd love to take all of your temperatures on that. Um, we just haven't gotten there, but I know we need to wrap up. So.
Okay, well, we can go, we take a quick look at it real quickly because I know that that's important. You have a secondary entrance on the alley because of ADA accessibility probably. So.
We'll actually provide accessibility at other locations. That secondary entrance will actually become the service entrance predominantly. Mary Tori, if I might, one question I I did have for you in terms of community hall and thinking about event. Is there a number of people that you think of as being adequate in terms of event spaces? There are a number you've heard from the community or that you have in mind? Um, as we look to learn and and grow the design from this conversation?
Uh, I mean, honestly, uh, every size is something that this community um, looks for, but um. Yeah, I'm talking about just smaller, smaller weddings. Uh, I don't know what that upstairs could hold. A hundred people perhaps seated or.
Lot more.
Hundred fifty, even more. So you're you're definitely in the ballpark of of what's needed. I I, you know, I'm just thinking about. Uh, whatever it is, nonprofit event space, wedding space, um, all the kind of things that that. Our main, our main usage of those used to be like the Hotel Jerome Ballroom. Um, but you know, it's expensive for them to to let that out. So it's just become a little bit more and more unattainable for uh, community events. And so um.
In terms of size, just as a point of reference, the lower level flex space that we show, we have laying out in there a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty in a banquet seating configuration. So that just gives you a sense of scale. Um, and that's the size of council chambers plus sort of the the vestibule to council chambers or the old council chambers.
Yeah, and 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 as we were talking about, it sounds like the bottom floor and the top floor are kind of those two things like it could be this way, it could be that way. It could be a mix and something, um, you know, I I've I've shared my my um, ideas with Jen, so um, I think you guys have those. And the approach to Hopkins, I think you've heard some support for that. So uh, I'm in line with all that stuff.
And before we move on to the facade, one thing in terms of kitchens up, down, where they go, working with our mechanical engineer. We were able to show one kitchen on option one, which again, option one, we're not talking about anymore. And option two, we didn't show any kitchens in the lower level. Because of the decreased ceiling height down there, our mechanical engineer has real concerns that that lower level could accommodate. More than one kitchen and thinks one kitchen would be difficult just to address some of the sketches that you had sent to Jen.
Appreciate it.
All right, we'll we'll quickly uh, go on to the approach to the building frontage. We really have approached this as studies, as I believe John or Ward maybe had alluded to. Um, this building has really changed over time in terms of its aesthetics, particularly on Hopkins is the. Uh, attitude of the exterior has changed to serve different needs. As we look back in time. Um, we can go to the next slide, Jen. So you'll see in this building in the image on my upper left, or I guess all of our left for the screen that you're looking at. The eve that extends onto Hopkins currently didn't exist when this building was first constructed. And you can see faintly in this photo that there's a fair amount of brick detail that happens up in that eve. You can see in these lower images how the building has evolved over time with the door and the window. And I believe this was uh, the. Post up?
Garage door at one time?
Um, so I I I think the point is that while this building has been serving the community in its entire history. The exterior appearance of it has changed to really meet the needs of what the building is performing inside. Um, so we've taken a a very progressive look at how we might open up uh, the Hopkins street elevation. We can go ahead and go to the the next slide. And this is really driven towards looking at the idea of curb appeal, successful retail and food and beverage space. How do we create activation along the street? How do we create visibility into the space? How do we bring daylight into the space? So with those goals in mind of curb appeal, activation, visual connection. We've studied a couple of different options that we'd love to just get get your take on. This first one takes an approach that really leaves, we can go to the next slide. Um, and these are just two very preliminary views that.
Whoa.
Takes the west side of the building and leaves the. The existing windows intact. Um, so you can imagine as you're walking down Galena Street. The building largely looks unchanged, but then as you you come around the corner onto Hopkins, you see that the building has opened up. You see that there's a new canopy canopy. We've pulled back the existing roof eve to get to some of the historic brick detailing that that canopy obscures. One thing to note in terms of the impact architecturally on this building. Is doing research on the National Historic Register documents for this building. The reason which this building was placed on the National Historic Register was because of its cultural significance. Not because of its architectural significance. So again, with the ongoing evolution, particularly on Hopkins of this facade. We wanted to take a look at an approach that really. Went after the ideas of opening this up, creating permeability, allowing visual connectivity, physical connectivity. Into the primary floor plan of of the the building. And then the next option uh, took a different approach stylistically. Um, maybe responding a bit more to the history, but taking a broader uh, shift or a broader change across the entirety of the Hopkins facade. Again, these are really preliminary studies. We're not suggesting that any one of these are the right options, but wanted to take your temperature on. One of these two approaches, see if it feels too much, see if it feels effective and then stylistically, you know. How do we dial that in from here moving forward?
And and then thi- this type of work is. Permittable or is it?
We, I mean, with HPC, we will have challenges. We'll need to make a strong case that this is respectful of the historic building, which we believe either of these can be. Um, we think this study one takes an approach while it's maybe more modern in its expression. We're using color and material and we don't know what those materials are yet, but the idea of it being deferential and and blending into the historic brick. And you know, the way we've talked about this um. Is perhaps if you're walking down Hopkins, if you're not looking at the building and just simply out of your peripheral vision. The idea is that the building doesn't call attention to itself. It feels like the armory and the armory that's always been there.
Okay. Did you have other renditions or just those two?
Just those two to get some.
Okay, so Ward, I'll start with you since you're online. Um, you know, they just showed the the two different possibilities. Again, they're not asking for. Even preference, but but your preference or your uh, nod just to move forward with that kind of opening up the side.
Uh, definitely moving forward with it. I want to make sure that any awning or any uh, shading that we have doesn't uh, take away the the south. Um, the south view of the sky and the sun, particularly in the in the winter time. Um, I like the glass giving the glass so that uh, to people inside at a restaurant or. Using it inside have that natural light because that building now is pretty dark inside. Uh, so definitely support this, uh, whether it's uh, this, I kind of like the corner element on the second one that was shown, but. Yeah, yeah, I kind of like that, but um, the one that's closest to Connor Park, but the the concept of opening it up. Curb appeal, uh, natural lighting coming in, um, really support that.
Thanks. Sam?
Yeah, study two looks um, better, but just having either would be a really nice touch. So definitely for this. Thank you.
Bill?
Definitely supportive. Prefer option two, like Ward's comment about um, permeability of the awning structure, more trellis seed than solid. Not sure I love the rounded tops of the windows and the and the awning feels a little.
Different.
Different juxtapose juxtap- juxtaposed to the rest of the building, uh, but a little more angular might. Do the trick, but I I like the direction of option two a lot. Thanks.
John?
Yeah, I'm I'm really psyched about removing that awning. That's going to create a lot more sun penetration into the building. Um, I like both uh, depictions you're showing here. But I would kind of like to see what I talked about earlier, just changing the first two windows on the left to doors. If we could do that all the way along the street, I think that would satisfy HPC as well.
Uh, members of council, just for clarity on a process, as I've directed this be submitted as a major public project. Uh, under the review criteria, it meets them. And so HPC will be in advisory role to you. Um, however, I I intend that this project would come before you for some of those final details in the decision-making. Thanks.
Thanks.
Um, I'm intrigued by it. I I'm option one or two. I don't care to get into, but um, yeah, it's interesting.
This last slide, I think we've covered. This was this was about talking about that expansion onto Hopkins and what that can be. And I I think. I I can't remember who who of you said it, but we agree totally that this shouldn't just be about dining for the food hall. That how do we create a space that is about the community that is as much Connor Park as it is dining for food hall? And to that point, from the previous plans, we did one alternative site plan that begins to express what that might look like. So we'll just go to that last slide. And if there's any additional feedback that those images or this slide warrant, that it becomes some dining, but it's more landscape. Um, could be stormwater management, um, some type of platform, outdoor seating. Um, that again is about lounging with your friends and meeting a a colleague as much as it is about food.
Yeah, I I think everybody was supportive of this. I I, you know, I. My comment was that this looks great in these renderings. I don't know how this goes on the ground. I I just, I don't, I don't know.
There's lots of work to do.
But I appreciated you showing that uh, slide of the art museum because similar concept there and um. So.
Great. John?
Again, I I'm going to use the student union building concept analogy here, I think. Be a great place to to hang out in front of the building and open up your laptop, study for a final.
Aspen State Teacher College Packer Hall.
There you go.
Bill, did you have a comment here?
Uh, yeah, I I don't like this slide compared to what you showed previously. I want interactive spaces. I don't want it restricted to dining only. I want it open to the public all hours. Um, so a variety of different seating, super casual, land form type of seating I'd be okay with, but definitely not rain gardens. Definitely not purely aesthetic landscaping. Um, I want it interactive and usable. Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Um, next steps and we're out of. Sorry, thanks. Um. We are looking to get a RFP out for a CMA GC so we can start. Um, having someone on board to help with cost estimating, another part that we need before we can do a pro forma. Okay, I thought you were going to add. Um, on October eighth, we're planning on coming back um, for a progress review with city council. Um, we're going to distill what we heard here tonight. We will move forward with the design and come back to hopefully get. Mostly a final blessing, some limited hopefully direction. And then we'll complete the enhanced schematic design. We are working on operator RFP milestones. Um, we need more. Detail in this design and how this will operate in the pro forma to um. Be able to go out for an operator. And the next things, once we have the schematic design, we'll be looking at preparing a land use application and working on design development at the same time.
Uh, when you say operator, are it, does that leave the door open for uh. Sub, a master lease and sub leasing different areas? Or is that something that like? We don't need to worry about because there would be one master lesser that would work out their own. Deals with individual area operators?
So we were looking at, the last time we talked about this in May, a single operator. Who would be the master um, a sore with the city and would lease spaces out and manage the building. What that's going to entail is getting a very detailed RFP and part of that is going to be getting. I think detail from council on expectations. So we have a lot more work to do. But that was the general direction that we thought we were going with in May.
And and I would just add to kind of, excuse me, to plant the seed. As we're moving to towards more of the student union and less pure revenue driven. There may be a more where you see like a management agreement where the someone comes in and and operates, but they're doing it based on. They're not necessarily leasing the building from the city. But they are managing the operations and the leases and licenses within the building. Um, again, it comes back to, I think, we just want in milestones is how do we create as much flexibility as possible to cast the widest net? To see who wants to come and play with you and what that best option is of, you know, what you're ultimately trying to achieve. You don't want to be constrained. You don't want to be constrained if you want to move more community and it doesn't generate all the revenue because there's not five, six, seven kitchens. That, that's, I don't think that's part of the formula right now. Like Jen said, you got a lot of work still to do. Hey, it's going in a great direction. Um, you know, these questions will get answered as we move forward.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Before you guys get up and leave though, I need one more minute because, um, we do have Bruce Ekins in the audience. And he put forth, um, to, uh, council, a couple of ideas and suggestions. And, um, council members, from the conversation tonight, some of, uh, Bruce's, uh, building, uh, floor plan and stuff are not necessarily reflected, um, as he proposed, but some of the, uh, essentials are captured in what we saw tonight, right? But the one idea that he was bringing forward, and I think that council at least needs to be asked about it, was, um, the, any interest in, um, potential near-term activation. And so all of you, I think, were aware that, um, the suggestion was that, you know, while work was going on or before work was going on, that there was the opportunity for remote kitchens on the outside of the building and, and the like. And I just needed to give this a, the proper airtime because he was making a request to council members. So Ward, I want to start with you. Do you have any interest in further exploration of that idea? If there's possible near-term activation at the Armory site?
You know, I appreciate Bruce's, uh, concept and food trailers, uh, in Connor Park. I'm just concerned that it would take the bandwidth that could be used at moving along what we've been looking at for years now, uh, as, um, I mean, we have limited manpower and if we put use, temporary uses into this equation, how long is that gonna delay getting us where we want to be with option two and everything that we've all mentioned?
Thank you. John?
Yeah, I too appreciate, uh, the thought that went into your proposal, Bruce. My thought is it would be much more interesting concept to go forward with activating some food if it were earlier in the summer. Right now, we've had, we've got people going back to school. Where we don't have as many tourists in town as we've had. I, I don't think that right now is the right time of year to be proposing this, especially with, uh, again, off season is coming and winter is not really when people want to be dining outside. So that's where I stand right now.
Sam?
Yeah, I appreciate it as well, but I'm good for now. Thank you.
Yeah, likewise. Bruce, thanks for all your efforts and ideas here. I don't want to distract from what's exciting and great progress. I don't think our climate's super conducive to year-round food truck, outdoor dining type of thing. And we're gonna be doing heavy work on the inside, hopefully relatively soon. But a couple of things that I do want to explore that Bruce brought up. One is the naming rights concept. I think that could be very interesting. And two is, um, exploring the idea of, of the Wheeler having a role here in unlocking some of those funds, whether it's purely for a art purpose or something greater. But even just from decorating it with great public art, if we could use it for nothing other than that, I think that would be interesting. So, thanks again, Bruce.
Yeah, I'm in the same boat at this time. I, I don't see us moving forward with those, um, in this season or in this fall season in prep for winter. I don't think that we'll be in a place that, well, hopefully we'll be in a place where this is moving forward and that construction would be prohibitive for that, but, and then I appreciate the temperance that you're putting on the use of Wheeler funds at this location. Uh, I'm not supportive of the larger concept of the Wheeler being the operator or this being under the umbrella of the Wheeler. And I would think that we will have funding accessibility depending on how we prefer to go about that. But thank you. And as far as naming rights, that'll come back to us at another time, maybe when we're having some financial discussions. All right.
Thanks, team.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
All right. We have one more item, I believe, that was added to our agenda. Uh, we are going to have a discussion in regards to potential ballot question, for this November. I would say at this time that, um, you know, I thought that, um, requesting an addition to a work session, uh, on a Friday for a Monday work session for a topic like this, wasn't really equitable to the general public. I do understand that, um, we have potential deadlines and dates. If there is, uh, some ballot language question that this council would agree on. So we are under a time crunch. So with that, um, happy to have this conversation, but I thought that after last week's work session, um, this was a little bit last minute. And, um, without talking to all of council members, I thought that this was, um, not, should, probably was a little out of timing. So, uh, with that, we'll go ahead and start. We had, uh, I got an email from Ward who was talking about some sort of rewording of a previous ballot question, uh, or something to the like. So Ward, if you'd like, I'll go ahead and open it up for you to, um, explain what you are thinking or what you are asking.
Yeah, I appreciate, uh, Tori, your comments about it being last minute. I, and I, I think it's in the line with, uh, if we are to have a vote, uh, in November, that we have to pull the trigger on it here really soon. And I think that, um, I'm certainly interested in, um, get the ball rolling to really, um, um, give some guidance to CDOT. And the question that I forwarded to you, I asked Nicole to, to send in. It was a, a 2001 ballot question, uh, question number four, uh, which was defeated, uh, nine thirteen to ten fifty-six, uh, twenty, twenty-three years ago. And it, basically, I think what it asked for and what I would be asking for is voter approval to use, um, um, open space or park space for an entrance to Aspen. We have three options that we've been considering. Preferred alternative, we definitely need to use Merle Thomas open space. A, um, split shot also would have to use Merle Thomas open space. And, uh, the, the plans we've seen for, um, three lane staging for the bus would take space from the golf course. So as, as I understand it, no matter what direction we go in, we're gonna need voter approval to use land that was purchased and used, uh, for public, uh, uses and convert it to, um, uh, transportation, uh, usage. And I think that the language for the two thousand, uh, one ballot was, uh, for two lanes of traffic and a separate, uh, dedicated busway that could be used for, uh, future light rail. And I, I, I've, uh, always supported light rail, but I never think it's gonna happen because of the, the expense. So what I would like to, to get forward, I don't know what we can do with this. And I think we need the EIS process to, to commence. We need to move forward with this as quickly as possible. And perhaps it is too, um, too close to what our deadline is to get this on the ballot, but I'm really interested in moving, uh, one of our options forward.
So you're suggesting to ask a question just for voter approval of utilizing open space for busways?
Transportation, yeah, whether it's, uh, cars, buses, light rail. I think, uh, we've been presented with evidence or with an opinion that states that if public land has, uh, open space has been used, even if it was purchased with transportation funds and we were to convert the use to transportation where it's been used as, uh, open space or parks, that we need a voter approval. And, uh, Kate can opine on that, please.
Okay, but there's a, I, I'm, I'm not clear though. Are you suggesting encompassing all three options under a voter approval for utilizing open space or transportation lands? Right?
Well, I, I, I don't know how specific we have to be on a ballot language. But as I understand it, uh, the three options that are before us with varying degrees of support for a split shot, S-curves or preferred alternative, all are gonna require the use of land that has been used for public or park purposes.
Right. Sam?
Yeah, I am strongly in favor of a ballot question. The question is to me is just what question or questions, um, basically approve a, go towards a supplemental EIS or approve the record decision and preferred alternative. So with Ward saying what he is, I would like either the two thousand and one ballot language, either saying yes or no to the preferred alternative or the two thousand and two ballot language saying S-curves or Merle Thomas as an advisory vote. But I think one of those is necessary to actually have this community move forward with conviction. I sort of have lost faith in the process without a vote because I just don't think, uh, a layer to CDOT without any conviction with, uh, without community support is gonna, I don't think it's gonna go anywhere. I think the bridge will eventually be condemned and I think the community will get the preferred alternative if we don't do anything. But I think now is our last chance to do something. And I think November is the right time with the highest voter turnout. Um, and it's only two months away, so it's not really a delay on anything that we're doing. So the two questions that I would like considered, and they can be considered in a resolution form for next Tuesday, would either be the two thousand and two vote as an advisory vote, S-curves or no. Um, S-curves are through the, through Main Street, through Straight Shot or the two thousand and one vote of, um, preferred alternative or no essentially is what it's asking. So those are the two that I would like for consideration. And this is a work session, so I'd love them to come back in resolution form next Tuesday for further discussion, but that's what I'd like to be on the agenda for next Tuesday and hopefully approved, uh, one or the other, both, um, for, uh, the November ballot.
What about split shot as an opportunity?
Well, that would go in with the, uh, S-curve or through the, um, Merle Thomas one advisory vote, like two thousand and two, because if it goes through Merle Thomas, then, uh, it could be the S-curves. That one doesn't necessarily say three lane shifted or preferred alternative. That just says, um, S-curves or not. And I think that commute, then it's, allows the community to say, we don't want to go through Merle Thomas or we want, uh, to go, uh, the current configuration. I, I, I think the community just very bluntly needs to decide on which direction they want to go. And I, you know, I, I say strongly, if it ends up being the preferred alternative, it ends up being Merle Thomas, I will support that. I, I think we've really waited, uh, way too long to solve this problem. And I, I think that community, um, vote in direction is the only solution to actually moving forward with conviction in one way or another. But I think a layer to CDOT, maybe in concurrence is fine with me, but I just don't think it will get us anywhere, um, in the same vein as a community vote where the community actually lets us know, we want the S-curve. So the community says, we want to go through Merle Thomas. Um, so one of those two ballot languages.
Yeah, I still don't understand. How is the split shot related to those?
The split shot would just, uh, be, um, it would A, still be an option if they turn down the preferred alternative language, um, or.
In the question that you were just saying, you were suggesting that there would be, uh, a vote that would be, um, between using the Merle Thomas open space?
Or going through the S-curves. That was the two thousand and two advisory vote.
Or not and staying on the S-curves.
Yeah.
And yet, going through Merle Thomas does not mean it's preferred alternative or split shot. There's no delineation there. You're just saying, do we use it?
Well, that's why I'm talking about two different votes potentially. It might be in concurrence, um, at the same time. These are things I want to be on the, uh, uh, resolution created for next Tuesday to have discussions about. But I, I mean, I think the binary vote probably helps more in some ways as far as do you want to do the preferred alternative or not? Because if it's not the preferred alternative and people say no to that, it's going to be the current configuration. And during the current configuration, the only thing that's really an option is the three lane shifted, in my opinion.
No, no, no. Once again, you're saying that the split shot is not an option. Because you're saying.
I don't know how you add the split shot to it, and I'll let Bill jump in because, um.
Well, because here, here's my thing. And I'll say it again. I've said it a million times. Look, what I hear from the community is that they are interested in, um, some of the benefit that preferred alternative is, but not with the negative impacts of the preferred alternative, whether that's, uh, tunnels and excavation, a traffic light at Seventh, et cetera. So I, you know, I don't think that that, a, a, a question that's binary between using the open space or staking on the current alignment really fleshes that out and doesn't represent, you know, a lot of what I've been hearing from, from the public. So I'm, I'm interested in, in moving towards something, but I don't know, I, I'm interested in how you, how you frame something. The other thing that I was asking is what does this vote? And would it be, it's an advisory vote or it's a binding vote? I mean, what, what, you know, what, what's kind of, what's in this?
Two, two thousand and one was binding, two thousand and two was advisory. Once again, I think the two thousand and one vote would be probably the preference because then it would be a rejection or an acceptance of the preferred alternative as proposed. And a rejection, I think, does give us the conviction to move forward with the current configuration. Because even so, um, a split shot, I think, needs to come down the line because it needs to go through an EIS anyway. And fixing the current bridge is the top priority. It's either fix the current bridge as the top priority or go through the Merle Thomas Straight Shot configuration. And the only thing that has like a quick potential for that is the preferred alternative. So accept it or reject it, reject it, and then it's like going through the current configuration. I know I haven't convinced you. I'm looking to the three others.
I disagree. Bill, comments?
Firstly, thanks to Sam and Ward for, for, um, bringing this forward. And Sam, for what you just explained, I think I'm in agreement with. Here's where I would add maybe a little twist on this is I, I do think it's time for an advisory vote. The last time one was done, I think, was twenty, twenty-two years ago. So, um, I think it's time to check in with the community as it is comprised today. And I think the community has had an opportunity to get educated on this, uh, lately. And I think now's a good time to ask and should give us direction, us and CDOT and the county, direction on, um, what is acceptable and what to pursue next. Here's, without knowing that what's allowed and what isn't allowed on, and, and what the right strategies are for asking things on, on ballots, I would propose it's a three-part question. And it's, you know, would you prefer the preferred alternative as presented in this record of decision? Or would you prefer the city to prioritize replacement of the Castle Creek Bridge in its existing alignment? Or would you prefer the city to explore the split shot, some variation of the split shot? And I, I think that's transparent. I think it's easy to understand. And you have to select one of the three. Again, I don't know how this stuff works, if that's possible or not, or how exactly it needs to be phrased. But I think if it's clear that you've got to make a choice of one of the three, I think that would be very transparent and telling.
John, some comments?
Yeah, uh, the more we talk about the entrance to Aspen, um, two things come to my mind. Yeah, uh, the more we talk about the entrance to Aspen, um, two things come to my mind. Uh, number one. Entrance to Aspen is a very divisive issue. Uh, that's very apparent to me, looking over all the votes that have happened in all the years since I've lived here. Um. Second thing is, I understand now much better why it's gone round and round for so long. It's because every time it comes up, we need to re-educate the general public as well as the new council people. Our council changes its membership every two years, uh, some larger degree than others, but. That's, those are the the two big things that uh that are striking to me about this this issue. Um. I. Agree with Bill. I think uh we can't leave out the split shot choice. But how do we, how do we include it? Because I think we do have basically those those three choices. Either the preferred alternative, which is going to give us a new bridge the fastest, or one of the other two. Um, I'm hoping there's a happy medium between the preferred alternative and the three lane bridge suggestion, but we will see. Thanks.
Thanks. Um. Do you have any response to the kinda questions around type of ballot language or type of question? And are the possibilities for asking an a two or question there? Um.
I I would have to defer the conversation with the election officials. I I actually have never seen your. And in all of the votes, there's never been, and there's been twenty seven of them. There's not been a vote, a question, rather, twenty seven ballot questions that has tell me your top choice. So I suspect that there are limitations to that approach to your ballot question. If you would like, I can place on the screen the two thou- and the two thousand and one and. And two thousand and two questions. Um, typically, they have been presented as separate questions. That are thumbs up or thumbs down.
And that's exactly what I was gonna say is that you could do exactly what Bill just said, but in three different questions, yes or no on modified split shot. I mean, it could be end up being the most confusing thing in the world, but.
That's what I don't want.
I I would like to avoid that too, but I would hope the general public.
Rank choice voting?
Is ranked choices close. I think, I mean, whatever it may be, I'm just glad some people are supportive of having a ballot question. I'm. Willing to sit here and brainstorm until we come up with one because I really, really think it's necessary. And Ward has had his hand up, so.
Thanks, Sam. I can see.
I I just would like to say I do have concerns about putting it to a vote as well. Uh, I I mean, I'm looking at both sides. On the one side, we're elected by uh city representatives to cast the votes for stuff like this. On the other side, it's a huge responsibility. Um, and wh- what concerns me is that we get another fifty one to forty nine percent vote, which doesn't give us a clear mandate. And then I'd like to point out that there have been several votes recently that have gone to a public vote that. I don't feel turned out in the best interest of the community, so I'm a little torn on this this particular issue.
Uh, Ward? Hands up.
Yeah, I think we're all torn on this issue. It's uh. It's a huge issue. It's been um pushed around for a long time. It's time to make a decision and. I would like uh Kate to opine on uh the necessity to have a vote. To uh convert public land to transportation corridor and. If indeed the S curves are going to require some golf course land, um, so my. First of all, I think advisory votes don't get us anywhere. John, I don't think we're ever gonna get sixty percent one way or the other.
I don't either.
The post this week came was question five on that same two thousand and one uh. Uh ballot, uh, the one after it was uh uh round about a cemetery lane was soundly defeated two to one. Um, twelve hundred and fifty nine votes uh no and six hundred and forty four votes uh yes. So I I think we just have to go forward with what the public uh um chooses. Advisory vote doesn't do anything. I'm sorry, Sammy, just doesn't. It just gets us where we were in two thousand and fifteen on the use of uh the armory, where we'll have to continue to address it. But I'm really curious uh for clarity from Kate on the need for a vote.
Well, I first want to address, I think there was some discussion about whether or not the split shot would require a vote. And it's my understanding based upon the history and the memo that was made public, that nineteen ninety six. A vote was approved to use the Merle and Thomas properties for a two-lane parkway and a corridor for a light rail transit system. That did not address the use for buses, so that's why you're here today. In the sense that if you do want to do the split shot that requires bus use over the Thomas and Merle spaces. Under the charter, you would need to have a vote authorizing that explicit use.
So, if I'm understanding this correctly, we could have a vote on that, which would change it from light rail to bus service?
It would authorize, so the two thousand and one language would authorize essentially would confirm the use of the rod as is. And would expressly authorize council to. Um, grant a property right for the use of a two-lane parkway and a two-lane uh bus, busway. Unless funding is is eventually obtained for the light rail system.
So eventually, there's still a possibility for a light rail.
Yes, under the rod, the light rail was always authorized. Under the nineteen ninety six vote, light rail was authorized. It's simply this use of bus as an interim use and Ms. Ott might have other. Another option or another more information on that.
I I would just sa- suggest is is that if you're trying to get a pulse of where voters are, you don't have to do it through a ballot. You do it through polling. Much quicker, much less expensive option for the council, if that's what you need. Um, the um. So I just want you to know there are alternatives, if it's an advisory vote that you're contemplating that don't require. This entire process and advisory polling, um, we will be able to know what, we will ask if it. The polling company won't ask if someone is a registered voter or not, so the data, assuming it's statistically valid, if it's split that off. Well, we'll be fine. The alternative difference is is you have to remember, we have a decent amount of our population who does not have citizenship to vote here. Um, and so as you think about this, you know, how how the vote is the um. Perhaps a direct democracy route, it does not include your entire oh voting age block of the community.
And I I just wanna finish real quick with Ms. with Councilmember Hollenstein's question. The respect to use of the golf. The golf space or 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 space outside of the Thomas Merle. Um, it is, I haven't researched that issue. It is possible that that would require a vote. I don't know that any of the perf- the. The plans as mentioned. Um. The three lane does, so that.
Bus slip lane.
With the slip lane would probably require.
It's the slip lane portion that.
Yes.
Chew over there.
Yeah, once you chew over there, I mean, but if you stay in right of way and or lands that are eventually. Obtained through legal means, you might you might avoid the the need for a vote if no parks and open spaces. Are affected.
My my recommendation to the council would be is that if you wish to have a binding question, that it's a thumbs up or thumbs down on the preferred alternative with the bus lanes. Um, to um, address the 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 question that's um, um, City Attorney True Rose. Cause if the answer is no from the community, your next step is the same regardless of what you hope happens next. It's an SEIS. So so that that's why, like, i- it doesn't matter if the community has a preference for something different. You have to go through the EIS process that will relook at all the options. Which could end up back at the preferred alternative. I always have to add that reminder in there. But that that's why I think um if you're, if you wanna get the tempo of the community, it's through polling. If you want binding direction, then it is through a ballot question.
So thank you very much, Sarah, for saying what I couldn't. That's what I meant, more or less, is that. It's either preferred alternative or we're going to a supplemental EIS, which could be one of many different options. But at least we get to do that, knowing the community has rejected the preferred alternative and if they accept it, so be it. But that's why I think it needs to happen.
Sarah, can you help me understand why polling is more expensive than adding?
No, it's typically less expensive.
I'm sorry, less, that's what I meant.
Yeah, so because this is a coordinated election, our cost might be lower, but polling has generally cost us less than fifteen thousand to be statistically valid. Um, if you look at the actual cost to the city to place the ballot question on top of what would be community members' resources. Um, and positioning the question one way or the other. Um, to influence that that ballot question, you would be at a higher cost overall to the community than you would with polling.
So you're not talking about dollars expended by the city of Aspen?
Yeah, I don't know right now. We don't have our final cost for um coordinated election right now. Um, given that there's um four questions from Picken County, you already have four. Um, and Snowmass has Jenna, one or two? Is it two? See, Tony knows.
The the sentiment you were expressing, Sarah, wasn't about dollars and cents. It was about effort.
Well, part of it is effort, but part of it is is that with polling, you capture some members of the community who are not eligible to vote here. But perhaps have been long-term members of our community, um, because polling allows you to talk to individuals who may not hold citizenship as well.
Do we have any estimate of how many full-time residents of Aspen, city of Aspen are non-citizens?
I think we have it. I don't, I'm looking at Jen, but I don't think I can pull it off the top of my head right here. I think we'd have to go back and look at some of the. The voter data, voter registration data.
Are we talking about tens or hundreds of people?
Um. I can't answer that without the data. I doubt that it's tens, just from my personal experience, the number of individuals I know who've lived in this community for quite a while. That don't hold citizenship. My instinct tells me it's more than ten people or twenty people. Yeah.
Okay, I appreciate. That perspective, but I do think we answer to the voters ultimately, so that's, you know, whoever the voters are, they are.
You know, I'm I'm a, I would be really hopeful um to 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 do something like this. But uh to be honest, I don't think we even have, I know that my questions haven't been answered about what the three lane alternative means. We still don't know what it means to extend a bus or any type of slip lane on its impacts on the open space. Um. I, you know, aside from the fact that I don't support the preferred alternative as it's ex- has been expressed. Um, I would be more comfortable asking if the original two-lane parkway and a transit corridor. Could be asked. Um, and the reason I say that is because if you look at the history of this issue. Um, the transit corridor was a big reason for people to support the preferred alternative. Uh, in the first place and moving away from that and yet still asking it. Doesn't doesn't have the same intent or integrity that the first questions did. This has come a long way and and um I believe that. The the first ask for a two-lane parkway and a transit corridor did pass public vote. But then moving it to four lanes, two bus lanes, two general traffic lane, as well as a transit corridor. Did not pass. So so for me, I I see a couple of problems here. One is that what are we presenting? Right? We don't even have definition around what the three-lane bridge entails. You know, and y- you gotta keep in mind, twenty something years ago, uh, I was advocating for reversible three-lane bridge. And where I've come over hearing public and community input is that that's not necessarily the preference these days. Where it might have been in the past. The preferred alternative is not the preference that I hear, where it might have been at one point when. The rail, a valley-wide rail was being contemplated in in that. Um, and you know, as I look at the ten areas of criteria that the. EIS is based and built upon, what I see that kind of fulfills those ten marks the most. Was the potential of a some design in the split shot type of uh type of configuration. So, you know, I would love for us to get a supplemental EIS going. Um, I would love for us to do uh more work on some of the detail, um, and not just the options. But the options and the detail around the alignments that this council supports. Uh, for example, and just as an example, uh, a three-lane configuration, the last iteration I saw of that. Uh, it was shared with us that there was uh a a hazard to a home below and and that. Uh, that could lead to uh a takings there, condemnation or whatever, or friendly condemnation. But I asked, well, can we mitigate for some of those impacts and not have friendly condemnation or something there? Uh, I also asked about the fact that it has to move uh the right-of-way four feet over towards the south. Well, well, i- is that the only? So I don't have enough detail about any of these solutions to actually say like, hey, this is, this is what I think is best for the community. I still would love some more information. I appreciate Sarah's um. Uh, offering a suggestion that, you know, we could get to some more information around polling. I can see that working. I could see us really refining that so that we get an accurate view, a reflective view. Of perhaps how that would play in an in a ballot and question. Uh, I like that. Um. You know, I have I have a couple of other concerns around going to the ballot question, especially this November. I appreciate that we do see our. Highest voter turnout in November and this one, hopefully, we're gonna see some of the highest because of uh some of the national questions that are being asked, but. Um. I I can also see that being a a a lot, a lot on our ballot. The city questions aren't necessarily that great, but we have valley and state. National questions that are really gonna be heavyweight questions, so um. I think that we could move towards a cleaner effort through a poll or survey question than we could through a ballot question. Um. But if we w- were interested in moving to a ballot question, the first question that I would ask is really about that original rod. Uh, approval, because what I've seen over the development of the preferred alternative. Has gotten away from what the community was originally even supporting with that. Solution.
Yeah, I I really want to push for the two thousand and one ballot language. I want the community to have our back if we go for a supplemental EIS. I want them to be able to reject the preferred alternative and I want them to be able to do it this November. And to especially to John and Ward who wanted the preferred alternative. This is your opportunity for them to pass it.
I didn't say I wanted the preferred alternative.
And that's not a. Sorry.
I said I per- I preferred it compared to the three-lane bridge. I also said, my main stance is, we need another bridge. I didn't, I never said that the preferred alternative was my first choice. I I could be wrong, but. Let me restate it right now. It's not my first choice. I think we should be looking at options with the with the split shot.
But sorry, but you've said to me a few times and to the community that you know it's the fastest way to have things done. But regardless, I just I just advocating like, let's put it to a resolution for next Tuesday and talk to the community and potentially put it on the ballot. But I think the two thousand and one language is our only option, um, at least right now to put ballot language on this November ballot and. Um, I think it's the opportunity for the community to say yes to it or to say no, and then we have the backing to go to a supplemental EIS. Um, or we go down the path that we're going down and just to me personally, I think that will lead to the bridge failing. And for us to talk about this for a while longer, just to have them to put in the preferred alternative or something like that. Um, because our bridges failed. So that's where I am at and I'll I'll leave it there, but I really hope I get two others to support at least putting the two thousand and one. Ballot language to at least a resolution next. to at least a resolution next Tuesday and then hopefully passing it.
Can we put up the 2001 ballot language?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there a different way to be thinking about this and asking a question about prioritizing efforts to fix or replace the Castle Creek Bridge, the existing Castle Creek Bridge as a priority, priority?
Hold on, I, I need, let me do one thing at a time.
Yep.
That's a question for everybody, not just Sarah.
Yeah, yeah, no, and Sarah and I actually talked about it a little bit. You know, the difficulty with the bridge and fixing the bridge, replacing the bridge, right? Is a couple of things. One, as I understand it, CDOT working off of the preferred alternative as course of action. Their, their expectation was not to replace the Castle Creek Bridge. It was to...
The current Record of Decision indicates that there's a time period after the construction of the preferred alternative, of which in that time period, CDOT needs to rehabilitate the bridge to an agreed-upon level between the city and the state, but it does not reach the level of replacement before it's turned over to the local road system. So the rod is written, written in an intentional way, knowing that that is a conversation to be had, but did not outline or predict exactly how or when it would occur.
Oh, it does say Newcastle Creek Bridge.
Yeah, so just to
Replacement.
Just to be clear about that language. I've placed the, the 2001 language up here for you. And then, I'm sorry, if you could repeat your question, Bill. I just want to make sure I heard it before I respond to it.
Okay, well, I want to respond to something you just said first, and then I'll rephrase the question. You know, yes, I understand what the rod contemplates in terms of restoring the existing bridge and, and then handing the keys over to the city. The problem is, what it doesn't do is it doesn't predict twenty-six years, twenty-six years into the future, when the bridge is not in good condition. And when that was contemplated, I think there was a good amount of runway ahead to, to install this preferred alternative concept and then turn the keys over to the city af, and once we, once CDOT repairs the bridge. I don't think we have that luxury of time anymore. And, and we can see firsthand what's happening in Gunnison, where they took for granted time and didn't pay close enough attention to, to vital arteries. So again, my question was, are we asking the wrong question? Should we ask our community, should we drop this, for the moment, drop this concept of the preferred alternative or anything else? And should we direct the city to prioritize efforts to fix or replace the existing bridge? That to me is, is as someone in our community mentioned last week, that's the emergent situation. That's what needs to be triaged and dealt with now. So why are we distracting with something that, that isn't the biggest issue in front of us?
And for me, the reason that we're having that conversation is because, again, we would need a supplemental EIS as well as there are impacts from the three-lane solution, as well as if we are looking at replacing the two-lane, we will have to do some other ingress and egress routing. So there's been talk about a temporary bridge being built while we replaced the existing Castle Creek Bridge. So, so those, those, those complicate that simple replacement of that bridge. And so that's where, that's where, you know, again, from my consideration, I still don't know what those impacts are around a three-lane bridge and whether that is an acceptable avenue for the community to go. Or would they say, you know what, we don't like that. What we'd prefer is build, build the two-lane bridge, build the split shot entrance to Aspen into the end of Main Street, utilize that during the construction period for replacing the existing Castle Creek Bridge. So those are the kind of moving pieces that I'm looking at. When it comes to this, and then John, I'll give you one second. When it comes to this 2001 question, once again, what I have issue here with is that in this question, this, this expands the preferred alternative from what I read as described originally as a two-lane parkway and a LRT corridor. This turns it into two-lane parkway and exclusive bus lanes. Adding two more lanes. And in it, 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 it's held on to, it's held on to the light rail corridor, but it expanded to bus lanes. And the assumption with this was that until the community supports rail funding. So what we have in front of us, what we've had in front of us for the last year and a half has been two bus lanes as well as a transit corridor. We can take the transit corridor out there, and you could say that the exclusive bus lanes then could be converted to rail or whatever, when the community funds them, which could be never, which would mean they would stay bus lanes. And what I'm saying is, I would be willing to ask more if there was support for what that original approval was, a two-lane parkway and the transit corridor. That, that, that I can accept. If, if, if that's kind of a nod from the public that you want to get, I can accept that. But right now, what this has grown to, and that means both the three-lane bridge proposal as well as the preferred alternative, they've, they've, they've grown more than they were. And so, you know, I'm interested, I'm interested in seeing if the community does accept this, but, but it's not this. You know, the, the light at Seventh, a four-hundred-foot tunnel, the disturbance of the burger cabinet, these are all things that people have talked about avoiding. And if it's avoidable through this solution, which is a two-lane parkway, or I, I shouldn't even say that anymore. It would be one exclusive bus lane and one general traffic lane, and I would leave the transit corridor there. But that, that I can support. But asking this, to get four lanes coming into the end of Main Street, I'm, it's, I'm just not supportive in it. I'm not supportive on behalf of my community who keeps balking at this. That's where I'm at. Again, if there was the possibility to bring a resolution to us that made sense for our consideration, I'm fine with that, but I haven't heard one yet.
Can we just
I put on the table what I just said.
Can we just straw poll on this May 2001 question, please? Because I've heard two of you say yes, I've heard one of you say no, and I don't know where the other two are.
I'll start with saying yes for me. I agree with a lot of what Tori said, but yes for me, let it be defeated so we can move forward. And we're just talking about a work session right now. So I would say for a resolution potentially next Tuesday, bring them both forward as resolutions next week. The question Tori asked of just one bus lane and one general traffic lane, and then the 2001 question as well, for discussion as resolutions. And we'll go from there. But that, that'd be my way of moving this forward and hopefully getting something on the ballot that's helpful. But honestly, Tori, I agree with you as far as this question goes. But I, I want to put on the ballot so it gets defeated, so we can move forward. I'm very clear about that.
I'm a no. I think that, to me, prior to my time on this side of the table, there's an implication that if a question like this is put on a ballot, then that's what the governing body that, that is asking that question is supportive of. And I am not supportive of this, so I will not support asking that question.
Would you ask the Tori question if you want?
No, again, I, I, I'm, I'm much more, there's two things for me. One, I want to deal with the big issue, which is the existing bridge. And for me, talking about this stuff that we don't have the luxury of time to talk about isn't the most important thing to me right now. I, I know I'm going off on a tangent here, but, you know, maybe, maybe this, what I suggested was repair or replace the existing bridge, because maybe all we need is five million dollars to upgrade, and I'm making up a number, I'm pulling it out of thin air here, but maybe we need five million dollars to fix that bridge so we have another twenty years to solve this community debate. I don't know. And maybe what comes out of that is there's a great way to do the three-lane shifted. Or maybe it's, this is a short-term Band-Aid that we need to self-fund, and we can't wait for CDOT. I'm okay with that. I, I don't need to definitively cement the three-lane shifted right now. I do want to deal with the emergent situation. So back to the straw poll, no, I'm not in support of that. I would explore a, a, a non-binding advisory vote to take the temperature of the community. I'd also be okay exploring polling, but I want to deal with the critical issue in front of us today.
John?
I just want to point out that if, if we're looking at doing the three-lane bridge in place, that means all of Aspen residents and all the traffic coming up from Dan Valley that serve our, our homes and businesses are going to have to, to endure traffic delays. I mean, they said minimal traffic delays, but I think we all know, you can drop the word minimal, there are going to be traffic delays for four years. Now, seems to me the common sense approach would be to build another bridge. Where? I'm not exactly sure. Build another bridge, and when it's done, we shift all the traffic from the bridge that has the problems that needs to be rebuilt over to the new bridge. Then we fix the old bridge. That seems to me to be the most common sense and the quickest way to fix the Castle Creek Bridge. And that is why I cannot support the three-lane bridge or the two-lane bridge. And I am looking at options which will give us another entrance to town. Not just for the traffic delays, but also for enhanced egress for emergency vehicles and fire evacuation, which the Aspen Fire Chief, the ambulance, the Aspen Ambulance District, the Sheriff's Department and the Police Department have all stated that they support. I'm supportive of a second bridge into town, which would do away with traffic delays. Thank you.
What about the ballot question?
Straw poll question?
Straw poll question, I would support polling. I do not support putting this on the ballot.
Okay. Kate, can you give us some insight into, as I was saying, there was an original Record of Decision that described just the two-lane parkway and the transit corridor? Was that accepted by the voters?
It was.
A point of where Ward hasn't gotten to chime in, even though I know, can, can Ward?
I got it, Sam, thanks, man. Yeah, I had a question, I just had a question.
I wasn't trying to do that, you were just going to Kate before, I just wanted to hear what Ward has to say.
I had a question for clarification.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Not being critical, I'm just
Ward.
Yeah, thank you. I think the city attorney, in his memo that we released, states that the quickest way forward is to have a, a vote in support of the preferred alternative or not. If the, you know, we're, we're all talking about numbers, they're talking about what we think the community wants, what our constituency wants. Let's let the people decide for themselves. If they say no to the preferred alternative, then we come back and we look at a split shot. We look at a two-lane or a three-lane. But I, I really want to move forward. I totally agree with Sam, we've got to move forward with this. And putting it off, I, it, we have three months. If we put it on the ballot, we'll have two months to debate this in public hearing. And I think that that should be enough time for everybody to get the information they need. So, you know, if the straw poll now is that there's not support by three members to put it on a ballot, then that's it. But I would certainly bring it forward to a resolution till we can discuss and make a final decision.
There are not three members that are interested in rerunning the May 2001 question. I, again, I support the suggestion that says, let's go out for some polling, because, you know what, we are not ready for a ballot question, but we can get the feedback that you guys are looking for. And the feedback that you're looking for probably comes to you best through a polling opportunity and not a ballot question this November. You know, and I, and I completely respect the desire to move forward. I just don't think that that's the best way to move forward. The best way to move forward is for us to, to ask a polling question if you need it. According to what Kate just said, you know, the voters have already accepted a two-lane parkway and transit corridor across the rural open space. So a supplemental EIS, I would wonder, would need to... Would it have to reaffirm that? Or would it just be focused on what the egress across the current alignment would do differently if that, if that routing in were accepted? Because I, I guess what I'm saying is, I'm assuming that maybe at this point, we could build a two-lane, two-lane and a transit corridor, or we could ask CDOT to start working on a two-lane and a transit corridor. I don't know.
Well, I need clarity about where those different transit lines and corridors are, so we could do the, the EIS, the SEIS for sure. I think the, the other thing I would, I just, a couple of times it's been brought up, the rod that was prior to the one signed in 1998. I just want to be clear that, that the 1998 one superseded any previous one. So that there's clarity on that when the community went through that process, it doesn't look back now and say, we can choose between any of them in the past. That's not how the Federal Highway Administration utilizes records of decision and their planning for the general public's infrastructure. At this point, I also could use clarity if I'm bringing back any ballot language at all next week. Also, there's currently nothing scheduled for Monday's work session, because I anticipated you might need this for additional talk on the bridge. So there's also an option to prepare a few different things and then have you review all of, they all have to be still listed on the agenda for Tuesday. But if you would like to debate further with language in front of you, we can do that on Monday evening as well.
Sorry not to answer your question, Sarah. I just did want to ask a question of, if our bridge failed, whatever that means, what would happen? Would CDOT come in and build two lanes through the rural corridor?
Well, CDOT has indicated us thus far, they'd start the implementation of the preferred alternative.
The four-lane.
As the Record of Decision reads right now, they would start implementation of that, is what they have indicated consistently in conversations with me. The, because that is the directive from the federal government to them at CDOT. The, and I also, I, I do feel like there's a bit of maybe overemphasis on the bridge failing. CDOT is not going to let the bridge fail, right? Could it have to be closed for some repairs? Absolutely. We've seen extreme examples, two extreme examples of that in Western Colorado this summer. However, they're paying close attention to this bridge. It's been on a regular inspection schedule. You have funded additional inspection work as well to keep it more frequent so we don't end into a failure situation. So I, I just want to emphasize again that there is plenty of proactive monitoring going on that we should have some faith in, because it's designed intentionally to prevent us from being in that situation as a community.
I, I, no, I just want to say I really appreciate that. And I'm not trying to fear monger, so I really appreciate that clarification. The, the point I'm just trying to make is, this decision, I feel like, is going to be taken out of our hands at a certain point. So it, it's frustrating for me as a council member to talk about this as much as we do, but feel like I don't have much control over it and not even send it to the voters and talk about some more. We'll pay for an EIS, we'll see where that goes. But ultimately, we might get the preferred alternative anyway. But ultimately, we might get the preferred alternative anyway, because, but like without any community support potentially. So anyway, thank you. I don't necessarily think there's going to be supportive ballot language here at this time, as disappointing as I find it. So it is what it is.
I too hate the fact that, that there's this CDOT pressure on something that, on this CDOT pressure to get us to do something and act on something that's going to change the character of our community so significantly. So I, I would like to discuss what we can do in the interim to reduce or remove that pressure. Can, can, again, are we open to having a conversation to discussing self-funding proactively some repairs to the existing bridge? So that we can have this conversation thoughtfully, and we can explore alternate designs. And you can get all those really thoughtful, interesting questions answered, Tori, that are still in your mind. This isn't something that should be rushed. And I do think, you know, a, a lot of people have painted this about changing the character of one block of a neighborhood, or, you know, shifting some open space from one place to another. It's, it's about a lot more than that. You know, entering in a vehicle through a 400 foot tunnel into what's supposed to be a quaint mountain town forever changes the character of this town and forever changes the entrance experience. This is not something that I want to have my feet held over the fire on. And I'd really like to explore removing some of that pressure. So I, I guess, I know, Sam, it's not what you would hope for there, but talking through this tonight made me realize that maybe that's the best avenue here is let's remove some of that pressure, let's be proactive. I understand the norm, and I respect that CDOT is monitoring this bridge. And I'm appreciative that we had support to further investigate the condition of the bridge. But we know it's not in good shape right now. And if we can do something to bring it up so that we have the benefit of more time to get this right, I think that would be the smart thing to do.
Sarah, did you do some investigation in that? Did our engineers look at that rehabilitation of that bridge and?
So we did not have Jacobs, I'm just looking, they did? Okay, Jen, I can't speak to the detail of the extent of their work that we funded them for. Because I think we only funded them to do sort of a conceptual review, not an actual analysis of what, what is needed or the cost of it.
They did a comparison similar to what they did for the Grand Avenue Bridge to understand what that rehabilitation would look like. I didn't have it pulled up, so if you'll give me just a second. But there was, there was an effort to do that work.
Okay, while she's pulling that up, you know, I would just say, you know, local funding is absolutely an option. Pete and I have talked about this already. Should you go that route and what our recommendation would be, preliminary, it's a property tax, a road and bridge property tax. And that, because we don't foresee how your existing revenue streams can do this type of work, particularly with interest, with your interest in the armory and that cost of that project is increasing quite a bit with some of the preliminary concept design direction we're receiving.
That's what I was going to say. That's what I was going to say, is we could fund it ourselves if we put the armory on hold.
Well, I don't know if you can fund it with the armory on hold, I'd have to look at the, the numbers are to be able to give you any confidence in that. You know, our, our view is, is that most likely there needs to be a few mills so that there can be a debt issuance to fund, fund this work, should it become a locally controlled item. So then you'd still need voter approval to do that. We would, that, that's the only mechanism to have that capacity.
Yeah, and to be clear, I'm not suggesting, I'm open to discussing it, but I'm not suggesting that the direction is that we take full ownership of the bridge, whatever that reversion or whatever the term was.
Yeah, it actually won't be turned over to local control. If you do this, it's still an asset of the state and federal government.
Yeah, my gut tells me that's the better approach. But you know, if we could provide the funding to make some, some critical repairs while they still controlled it, that to me feels like the best move today. And Jen, do you recall if they put financial estimates for those repairs in there?
They did, I just can't remember it off the top of my head, so. I'm finally to the attachment, it was just a little slow, I'm sorry in getting it pulled up.
I guess we could all review that.
It's in the feasibility assessment that happened in the April 15 council session, so that's been a while. And it's just opening the document now. My recollection is it's in the $44 million range, but I, I just, I'd like to be able to pull it up here. My computer's in revolt, it's so slow.
So we don't, we don't need that direction this evening, though, so we can also just reissue this.
Yeah, that'd be great.
As she digs through that. What I'm hearing right now, just so I have clarity then, is that there is no direction, I shouldn't say direction. Based upon this discussion, you're not requesting staff prepare any ballot question options to appear on the August 27th agenda.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm disappointed in that. I don't think that it gets us closer to a resolution. I think it just pushes it, the decision point down the road. But that's what, that's what the majority of the council supports, and I'll support that.
Thanks, Ward. We've watched it go from blue to black behind you there, Ward. We know that it's getting late there, so thank you so much for being with us for the duration of this meeting. This was long but productive, I appreciate it.
It's, it's gone to raining now, too.
At least it didn't go from black to blue, like it was when we watched.
Okay, Sam, thank you so much.
I think when you were in Europe, that was like four in the morning when you were finished, Bill.
Thank you so much for your support on this conversation and you too, Kate. All right. Sarah, you were saying something about the the work session, did you want us to discuss the other ballot questions that?
No, that's unnecessary. You have second reading and public hearing on those on the 27th. But based upon this, staff has nothing scheduled for the August 26th, this coming Monday. So it's, it will be, if there's any topics at this point, there'll be council-led topics, and I'll defer to the mayor of whether you're having a meeting.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. Thank you, Jen.
Thanks, Jen.
With that, we're going to say good evening. That is the last of our agenda for tonight. We will be back next Tuesday? Do we have regular scheduling?
If you're canceling the work session, that staff has nothing to present at, then yes. If you want a council-led discussion, then one day.
All right, well, thank you as always to grassroots, we appreciate you. Have a great evening, everybody.